Good evening, councillors, officers, members of the public in attendance and our viewers live streaming tonight's meeting. My name is councillor Suzanne Newson, I'm the mayor of Darabben City Council and the chairperson of tonight's meeting. It's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's council meeting and I declare the meeting open at 6:04pm. The meeting is a scheduled hybrid meeting and we currently don't have any councillors online, but we may have members of the public attending online. The meeting is being livestreamed and a recording will be made available on the council website as soon as practicable after the meeting. I'd first like to mention welcoming cities accreditation. So in 2017, Darabben City Council made a commitment to inclusion by becoming a member of the welcoming cities network. An action in our four-year council plan was to continue to implement the welcoming cities standards with the aim of becoming a mentoring level council. Across the organisation, we're set to undertake a rigorous process, reporting on six categories of the welcoming cities standard and several indicators under each category. I'm very pleased to announce earlier this month Darabben City Council was accredited as a welcoming city at the excelling level and we received an overall score of 4.7 out of a possible five. This is the first time in Australia a local government has received this level of accreditation. The accreditation is proof of our commitment to welcoming practices and the ongoing implementation work to support diversity and inclusion. While this accreditation is a celebration, it's also a call to action. Welcoming cities found there is much to be celebrated and there is also room for growth and I'm sure this great work will continue. We're just checking the AV, just bear with us. Audience members, we're just checking the AV, we're just getting a bit of feedback. We'll go on to the acknowledgement of traditional owners. I would like to start the meeting by acknowledging the Wondray Woiwong people, the traditional owners of the land, and I pay my respects to elders past and present and I recognise their continuing connection to land, water and culture. Personally, I also demonstrate my support for treaty in Victoria and acknowledge that ongoing process. I would like to next introduce the councillors and senior staff who are with us this evening. We have councillor Lawrence, the deputy mayor, who's just stepped out, councillor Emily Demetriades, councillor Kaytina Greco, councillor Tom Hannan, councillor Trent McCarthy, who's on his way, councillor Lena Messina, councillor Susan Rennie and councillor Julie Williams. Officers in attendance tonight are Rachel Olivier, our acting CEO, Kylie Bennetts, the general manager, community, Anna Jampiccolo, the acting general manager, customer and corporate, Vanessa Petrie, the general manager, city sustainability and strategy, and Felicity Walsh, our interim manager, governance and communications. Item three is apologies and I have no apologies this evening. Item four is declarations of conflict of interest. Councillors and officers, are there any interests or conflicts to declare? Vanessa.
Thank you, ma'am. I have a conflict relating to the EV EOI item and also the Bot Jering report and I'll leave the chamber when these two items are discussed and debated.
Thank you, Vanessa. Have I got other conflicts or interests to declare? I'll be declaring a conflict on the governance item due to a connection I have with one of the nominees of the Climate Emergency Committee and I'll step out and I'll ask the deputy mayor to share that item. Do we have any other conflicts or interests to declare? No. We'll now go on to item five, the confirmation of minutes of the previous meetings. Councillors, could I please have a mover for the adoption of the minutes?
Ma'am, I just have a question in relation to the minutes. I think there's an error in the minutes in relation to my attendance. It's recorded on the 22nd of July, the council meeting, it's recorded that I was an apology when I think it should have been recorded as approved leave of absence rather than a simple apology.
Okay, so councillor Greco, did you want to move the minutes with that amendment?
I'm happy to move it with that amendment, yes.
Okay, have we got a second for that item? Councillor Rennie? So just to clarify for anyone watching, so we are going to be moving the adoption of the minutes of the ordinary council meeting held on 22nd of July with the amendment and the minutes of the special council meetings held on the 29th of July 2024, the 14th of August 2024 at 5:30 and the 14th of August meeting 2024 at 6pm. So we've got a mover and a second. I'll go straight to the vote, all those in favour? That's carried unanimously, thank you councillors. Item six is council's occupational health and safety responsibilities. Council has an occupational health and safety responsibility to ensure anyone attending tonight's meeting feels safe, both physically and emotionally. It's great to see everyone here this evening and I would like to remind everyone in attendance to be respectful of each other and as outlined in our governance rules, please note the following. A councillor or any other person who addresses the meeting must do so in a courteous and respectful manner and must take direction from the chairperson whenever called on to do so. Any member of the public, oh sorry, councillor, did you have a question?
When you finish that item, I'd like to ask a question, that's all.
Okay, so any member of the public physically attending a meeting must not utter any offensive, indecent, insulting or objectionable item or words, including words that are racist, sexist or homophobic, or interject or gesticulate offensively in the council chamber. Silence must be preserved by the gallery at all times during a meeting, other than by a person in the gallery who is invited to address the meeting. If any member of the public engages in conduct that is improper or disorderly, the chairperson may direct that person to cease their conduct and the person must comply with that direction. I'll go to councillor Williams.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to just ask the question in reference to the previous item where councillor Greco moved those meetings. I just want to ask through you, ma'am, to the governance whether that was in our governance that if a councillor has not attended any of those meetings, that he's moving those minutes for those meetings?
Sure, actually, that's a good question, let me check that. Councillor Williams, it's a very good question. I've just sought advice from Felicity and, look, I think you're right. So what we might do is, and look, I think that was my fault because I suggested, I prompted councillor Greco to move the minutes, but what we might do is we might go backwards. So we've just done the item six, but I'll go back to item five and redo it. So councillor Williams, would you like to move the minutes?
Happy to move the minutes with the amendment of councillor Greco's absence of leave.
Great, and seconded by councillor Rennie and we'll go back to the vote. That's councillors, all those in favour? So that's carried unanimously, thank you councillors and thank you councillor Williams for pointing that out. Excuse me. So we'll go to item seven, which is public question time. Councillors will now move on to public question time, we have 30 minutes for this item. If we exceed that time, I'll ask for a procedural motion to extend question time for another 30 minutes. In line with council's governance rules, no questions will be taken from people in the gallery unless they submitted their questions by noon today. You can only ask three questions and you cannot speak for more than two minutes. Please be mindful, this is question time, so only ask your question, do not make a statement. Questions relating to notices of motion, petitions or urgent business will not be accepted in accordance with the governance rules. For members of the public who have registered to ask a question in person, I'll call your name when it's time. If I call your name and you do not respond, I'll take it you're not in the gallery and one of our officers will read the question on your behalf. The relevant general manager will then provide a response. If you are in attendance, in person or virtually, I'll invite you to come to lectern or unmute your microphone to state your name and ask your question. Like questions will be grouped together and the first person who submitted like question can ask their question. So the first person we will go to, do we have Patricia from Thornbury in the audience? Patricia, please come to the lectern and I'll get you to ask your three questions and then we'll go to the answers from the general managers. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you, ma'am. My first question is, what actions is the council taking to address our concerns about the contaminated soil dumped on our site, which is approximately 100 metres from the creek and directly affecting the stormwater system? My second question is, has the council submitted our request for a heritage overlay to the minister to help prevent the deceptive attempts to demolish our site and if not, why? And question three is, what measures are being implemented by the council to ensure the protection of our site and the surrounding environment, given the ongoing issues with attempts to demolish our 67-year-old club and the potential impacts on the community? Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia, and I'm sorry to hear what you're going through, it sounds very challenging and I'm going to go on to Vanessa for the three responses, thank you.
Thank you for your questions, through you, ma'am. I note that you've shared the site that your questions refer to with officers. Council understands that the Environment Protection Authority is aware of the alleged contamination and is investigating. As the site is privately owned, council notes concerns about contaminated soil and will consider this information as part of any future proposal to redevelop the premises in line with the relevant legislation. Regarding your second question, council is currently evaluating the request to apply a heritage overlay and is evaluating whether the site satisfies the HERCON heritage criteria to justify the application of the heritage overlay. And regarding your third question, following the fire and damage to the property in February this year, the structures remain unsuitable for occupation. There is a building order prohibiting occupation until the premises is sufficiently repaired and returned to a condition that meets the relevant regulations. To date, there's been no section 29A application for demolition that has been received for the site, so there appears no urgent or immediate threat to the structures on the site.
Thank you, Vanessa, thank you very much, I'll get you to resume your seat. So we now have Ruth Jelly of Northkirk who is not, oh sorry. Sorry, apologies, councillor Messina.
Yeah, just for the purpose of the gallery, we've referred to a site, the site, our site, but we haven't been clear about what specific site that is, I'm just wondering if we could address that in the gallery.
I'll just go to our acting CEO, Rachel.
So councillors in the gallery, certainly officers have avoided naming the site because the question put to us has not included the site name, so we've attempted to maintain confidentiality.
I did receive an email to confirm that, which I did do, so I did confirm that it was the Fulham Club in Thornbury.
Thank you. So councillor Messina, is that everything? Yep, thank you. So our next questioner is Ruth Jelly of Northkirk, who is not attending, so Jodi, are you asking the question? Thank you, I'll get you to read the three questions.
Thank you through you, ma'am, three questions from Ruth. The first relates to Destination High Street. What responses council had from the Department of Transport and Planning to its Destination High Street advocacy plan? Question two is regarding state budget allocations. Is there a state budget allocation for detailed design and construction of the tram stops? And three, has council allocated budget funds to streetscape upgrades to coincide with the tram stop upgrades along High Street from Separation Street to the Plente Road junction?
Thanks, Jodi, we'll get you to, I think we'll take that mic out of circulation, thanks, Anna, and we will go to Vanessa for the responses.
Thank you through you, ma'am, thank you for your questions. Regarding the first question, the state government has provided written acknowledgement of council's submission to the Route 86 project. The correspondence points to ongoing collaboration with council to progress to the next phase of the project. Regarding the second question, at this stage, we understand that the state government funding has only been committed for the development phase. And regarding your third question, no, council has not allocated capital funds. Any future consideration of funding would occur through council's annual budget processes.
Thank you, we have Geraldine Wood next, Reservoir, attending in person, so Geraldine, would you like to come to the lectern? No, Geraldine? Okay, then Geraldine, I'll get you to ask the, is it three questions? Two questions, thank you.
Geraldine's question's related to KP Hardiman Reserve. Council budget for 24, 25 and 25, 26, there are allocations for KP Hardiman for the total of $3 million for pavilion upgrade. Has any of this money come from any state or federal grants funding or sporting club contributions or has the money come entirely from council with no other assistance?
And Geraldine, second question, please advise what other community or sporting organisation currently use these facilities other than La Trobe University?
Thank you, Jodi, I'll go to Kylie for those two responses.
Through you, ma'am, thank you for your questions, Geraldine. No state or federal funding or external contributions have been budgeted to support the redevelopment of KP Hardiman over the next two years. Just over $1 million has been allocated by council in 24, 25 with the balance $1.98 million in 25, 26 from council funds. A grant submission was made to the Australian Government Play Our Way program and unfortunately, council was advised in August that its application for this project was unsuccessful. In 2022, the project however was successful in receiving a $30,000 local sports infrastructure grant from the state government and that supported the planning and design phase of the particular project. In terms of the second question, La Trobe University is the long-term tenant there and has been there for more than 30 years. The turf area of the reserve also accommodates local sporting clubs during the AFL and soccer pre-season, including the Preston Bulance Amateur Football Club and also the Junior Football Club, the Fips Roy Stars Football Club, the Darabben Women's Sports Club, the Northern Falcons Football Club and the Our Lady of Lebanon Catholic Parish Football Club. Anecdotally, the turf area of the reserve is also known to be accessed by residents for recreational activities such as dog walking and other active recreation opportunities.
Thank you, Kylie. Next person is John Newson of Epping, would you like to come to the lectern, John, and ask your three questions? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I have three questions as usual, as soon as I get them open. Right, ma'am, the first question is, during the 2324 financial year, I asked the question several times on the policy of subsidy fees. I was constantly advised by the officers we're developing a new policy and will be introduced the next financial year. Once again, council failed to keep its promise to develop a new policy, thus allowing juniors and disability clubs to be discriminated against again this financial year. Ma'am, why wasn't this new policy developed when it was promised? And two, ma'am, why hasn't this council increased their charges on other items in the budget where juniors pay less than seniors?
Thank you, John. Would you like to ask your other two questions and then we'll get the responses to all three?
Right, ma'am. That's all right. At the last council meeting, I asked two questions, what is council paying for council meals prior to council meetings and what is council going to spend on trees and shrubs in this budget? Ma'am, in the answer given, both answers will be referred to next year's budget. To me, this is saying nothing will be done. Ma'am, why can't this funding be stopped now? And the third question, ma'am? Ma'am, could you please provide the following information? What did council pay for consultants for the 2324 financial year? Also, do your general managers meet with each other to discuss their project problems without going to a consultant, thus making our general managers multi-skilled and less money spent elsewhere? That's all, ma'am.
Thank you very much, John. So for the first question you asked, I'm going to go to Michael. Oh, sorry, 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 I'm going to go to Kylie first.
Thank you, ma'am, and through you, thank you for the question, John, around the policy of subsidy or the fee subsidy policy. In terms of policy development, you are correct, it had been officers' intention to undertake a major review of this policy in 2025. This work was delayed as the area leading this work had new priorities it needed to respond to for council because of a range of council decisions passed in late 2023 and early 2024 that it needed to attend to. This was in addition to needing to respond to a range of service delivery matters. Officers highlighted in a report to council in April 2024 the status and next steps related to this policy, including a review in 2025. In August 2024, council approved some minor changes to this policy to meet state government requirements. In terms of fees and charges more generally, council reviews these each year as part of its budget process. Council considers a range of factors when looking at these each year when it makes its final decision around fees and charges and I'll hand to Michael to answer your second question.
Thank you, and this is the one about trees and shrubs in the budget.
Thank you, ma'am, through you. Hi, John, and thank you for your question. We answered part of your question at the last council meeting and took part of the question on notice. We wrote to you recently to answer your question about the cost associated with trees and shrubs. This year's current budget includes around $750,000 for tree planting and $300 for rewilding, which is understory planting. In regards to your question about the cost of meals, I'm sorry, I do not realise we needed to take this answer on notice after the last meeting, we will follow this up and write to you with the answer. Council is planning the next review of its future budgets over the first half of 2025 as part of the annual budgeting process. It is possible for changes to be made before then, although there aren't plans for this. We will take your question about why can't funding be stopped sooner than next year's budget as feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael, and I'll go to Rachel for the third answer.
Thanks, John, for the question. Your third question was about what council paid for consultants in the 2324 financial year. So we're still finalising the annual accounts, but we do have interim figures. Our interim figures show that council spent $2.58 million on consultancy costs in 2324, which is about 1.3% of council's total budgeted expenses and it was a third less than the year prior. The consultants used were for a wide range of specialty skills from engineering to IT to town planning to compliance.
Thank you, Rachel. Do we have Lisa Lapadula from Bundura in the audience? Lisa, please come to the lectern and ask your questions, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am Newson. I have a strong bond with the city of Darabben, I worked in Preston for 25 years, I've had my own business there for 17 years and I now live in Bundura, so yeah, I knew Preston well and now Bundura well. I'm a sensible and responsible person and I enjoy public and occupational health and safety, I also care for the greater good. Basically, here today, I'm wanting to present to you, to ask actually, to have the grass cut more often at Bundura Park. So we live in a beautiful Mount Cooper estate, we've got a triple-storey home, lots of balconies along all the houses along the areas. Grass is always being left far too long before it ends up being cashed. Unfinished grass cutting is always occurring with lines through the park, there is always mulch that flies along everywhere. We have broken branches not being removed by council rangers and workers who occasionally drive in and alongside the park with an empty bucket or tray on their truck. Grass is not being cut the week before school holidays or before cross-country sports, so it's inconveniently long throughout those times. Sometimes it's been cut the day before New Year's Eve, so people that were coming to the water tower or to watch the sunset, they're having grass all around them, debris, it ends up on their shoes. It's a continuously unenjoyable problem for many local families who just want to have a quick outdoor break, go and have a snack across the road to eat. My son loves to play soccer, sometimes the grass is a foot long, so sometimes we cannot find my son's soccer ball, he can barely even kick the soccer ball in the grass. We met with some of your people from Darabben Council two weeks ago and my son, eight-year-old son, wrote a calling all kids for Darabben. He drew a picture of a kangaroo, which we see often at our park, which we love, and he wrote, please cut the grass at Bundura Park.
Beautiful.
So we really value, we love the whole centre, the whole area, I walked my son there with the pram, there aren't any bike paths, there aren't any walking paths, there's plenty that could be done there, I have a list of about 100 items, that's another story. But at least if the grass could be cut more often, people have seen snakes there, you've got a gorgeous green John Deere tractor that's very often broken down, so they're then using the old orange tractor that's not working very well. Your workers are all fantastic, but maybe you need to employ more people or give them less parks to be working on. So really, my three questions are, why is the very often long grass at the beautiful Bundura Park not cashed and maintained on a regular basis? Question two, do you, the city of Darabben, have enough money within your budget to pay for the extra workers to fulfil Bundura Park work that is very often not finished? Question three, is there a plan in place to update and redevelop most of our very popular Bundura Park in many ways?
Thank you very much, Lisa, and I do also share your love for Bundura Park and Mount Cooper as well.
And the nativity of it, you know, at Bundura Square, they've got even these rubbish bins or walls that have native photographic images of an emu or a kangaroo or, you know, a butterfly. If you could put bins like that all around Bundura Square, if we can get some benches there where everybody's coming along to watch the sunseash.
Wonderful items, thank you.
Lots of things that could be done.
Fantastic, and I'm going to go to Michael for the answer to the three questions, thank you very much, Michael.
Thank you, and through you, ma'am. Lisa, thank you very much for your questions. In regards to your first question, the mowing cycles at Bundura Park are variable based on specific areas. Generally, most of the areas run on a four to six week cycle throughout the year, but the open space area and say the north-east section of the park is closer to a six to eight week cycle. The maintenance is subject to weather, suitable ground conditions and there are often events planned for that area, for example, may delay the mowing of an area just prior to a cross-country running event to ensure the course is in good condition. In response to your second question, the adopted 2425 budget allows for the current frequency of maintenance, as I have just described, to be continued ongoing. In regards to your third question, council has a plan in place to renew assets at the end of their lives, including those at Bundura Park. At the moment, council plans are to keep Bundura Park sustainably as it is. Council would next consider priorities for improvements across the city the first half of 2025, when it is set with the new council plan and long-term financial plan. We welcome and value community ideas and feedback at that time and ongoing in general. The key challenge in relation to inflation has been a very, very high in the construction sector. Construction costs have rapidly increased and put significant pressure on council's budget overall. Higher costs of keeping parks and community facilities as they are has squeezed out budgets for improvement or redevelopment. Overall, council has limited funding for major redevelopment in parks, we need to focus opportunities to better use parks and facilities in highly cost-effective mannerways. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Michael.
Minor redevelopment, not major redevelopment, that could already help assist a bit too.
Thank you, and I'll go to Rachel for some additional information.
Thank you, Lisa, I think some of the things you shared just before are a little bit different. are a little bit different to what we'd received earlier. What I might ask is that the team reach out to you tomorrow just to understand a bit more about what you're observing in case there are some operational elements that we need to attend to. Thanks.
Thank you. And I would also encourage community members to come up to Bandura Park on the 14th of September. We have our Gambriqual and Annual First Nations Event there, which I'm really looking forward to. We now have Ben Horth of Thon, oh, sorry, Council Leaves. Did you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, I did also notice that, um, thank you, Lisa, for coming. But she did mention Bandura Square. Bandura Square is actually past Settlement Road, which is not in the Darabin vicinity. It's in Whittlesey. So I'm not sure if there's a boundary crossover here in this situation. That was all.
That's a good point. And we'll reach out to you tomorrow to follow that up. And Whittlesey is going to have some councils in November, so you can also head up there after that. So I'll go next to Ben Horth in Thonbury. Would you like to come to the lectern, Ben?
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to ask, can I ask my questions individually and get answers to them individually? Is that possible?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, great, thank you. So my questions concern financial probity. And specifically, the first two questions concern the meeting that was held on the 14th of August, the 6pm meeting, not the other special meeting at 5.30. And specifically therein, item 5.10, upcoming procurement, tender evaluation process options and authorisation to commence procurement activity. I remind the chamber, including the audience, that this item was in response to a resolution from the 26th of February of this year in which council had resolved to direct officers to review and update council's social and sustainability procurement policy, specifically in relation to companies that benefit from illegal occupations, international military forces and human rights abuses. And this was clearly in the context of the genocide of the Palestinian people in Gaza and the question of whether Darabin had or might in the future have any contracts with companies complicit in that genocide and in the illegal occupation of the Israeli state by the, um, the unceded lands of the Palestinian people. So my question, my first question is in relation to the contracts that council resolved at that meeting to put to tender despite the fact that such a review had not yet occurred. And specifically the fact that the contracts which were to be put to tender were not included, were kept confidential from the public. Is it not the case that which contracts are to go to tender? Not who is applying for the tenders or the information that those tenderers might submit in the, in the process of their tendering, but what the tender is for? Is it not the case that this is public information under the Local Government Act and that it is highly unusual to not provide even the information of which contracts are out to tender? Why was this rushed through before the review of the procurement policy that council had previously ordered? And why were the contracts kept confidential? And what are those contracts that are now being put out to tender? That's my first question.
Thank you, Ben. I'll go to Rachel, our acting CEO, for the response to your first question.
Thank you, Ben, for the question. Certainly, some of the, what you've shared in your question today is, is a bit different to what I've received as the question today. So I will certainly seek to respond. The report to council from that meeting is available on the website. And essentially, it, it set out that the reason the services, the reason it was important for those, the tendering of those services to be considered is that the services are essential and that there are serious business continuity and financial risks with further delay. It essentially means that if we don't proceed to find a supplier, there are risks we might not be able to continue some of our functions or services. And that, or, and that there may be additional costs to providing those functions or services or to fix issues arising from that. And delays so far have already increased the risk. What I can share is that council decided how it wished to proceed and that includes an open tender process. So council is working on running that open tender process at the moment.
Thank you, Rachel.
Well, sorry, just to be clear, my question, and I did submit this part, is why were the contracts that are to be put to an open tender process kept confidential? And what are they?
Rachel, did you want to clarify anything or is that your full response?
Essentially, what I can say is that we've made an assessment of confidentiality ahead of putting that report to council in, in August, using the tests under the Local Government Act. So we've made that assessment and assessed that some of that information needed to be kept confidential. That's probably the extent I can go to. The thing I can reiterate is that council's decided to use an open tender process. And so that will be the, the process that council uses.
And can you clarify then?
Thank you, Rachel. Ben, I'll get you to go to your next question, please.
Okay, I will. So my next question is a follow-on from that. I note that in 2017, council entered into a contract with a company called Computer Services Australia, which at that time, it has interestingly disappeared entirely from the internet and the public record, but at that time was a subsidiary of HP Hewlett Packard, which is widely acknowledged as complicit in the genocide and apartheid in Palestine. And we can see in the libraries, I can see before me, all of the computers are HP computers. That contract at the time that it was entered into was not kept confidential. Can council clarify the timeline and the process for this so-called open tender process? And, and can council clarify what assurances the community can be given? That option one B, which was chosen, which is that any submission to this process, any, any tenderer will have to make a declaration about whether or not they are complicit in war crimes and illegal occupation and will be scored as a 10 for making a submission or a zero for making no submission. And that that score of 10% will form part of the overall 25% of social sustainability weighting. What assurances can council provide the community that a company, that, a, a, another company that might be a subsidiary of Hewlett Packard Enterprises that, you know, is 11% cheaper than its closest competitor and loses 10% because it cannot lie and say that it is not complicit with the actions of the Israeli state currently, would win that process under the current option?
Ben, thank you for the question. I'm going to go to Rachel for the response.
So, Ben, again, there's a lot of detail in what, in your, the question you've asked live that's a bit different to what was received earlier. So the question that certainly we've considered in preparing for tonight is what's the timeline for the tender process? And what assurances can council give the community that companies complicit, as you say, will not win the tenders? So.
Sorry, I, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I would just like to note that the, the essential substance of my question does not really differ from what you've said. So I don't, I don't take particularly kindly to the misrepresentation that I'm springing a question on you.
I'll get Rachel to answer the question. Thank you. And then we'll go to your third question. Thank you.
I, I am seeking to be clear that some of the context you're providing is, is new and I don't have all the detail on hand that would relate to that. So I might take your second question first about assurances. Certainly, what I can say is that council's decision on the 14th of August was about which process to use to best implement that resolution from February 2024 that, that you referred to early on. And it was for the purposes of the two urgent tenders. Council's decision has included requiring any tenderers to make a declaration. And certainly, the minutes of that decision and the report to council have the process that council's decided to use. We do have some copies available here if there are people who haven't had a chance to look at those. But really, that is the process that, as an organisation, we will implement and follow through. And it will be that process that sort of results in an outcome. In regards to the timeline, I had understood the question originally as, as meaning the sort of whole process of tendering and evaluation, which we would expect to take about two to three months all up. It sort of depends slightly on what happens through that process in terms of the various due diligence steps. But hearing your question tonight being more about when will the tender be released, I can say I would expect that to be pretty soon. And we publish tenders on our website. I haven't specifically asked the team about that timing in the lead-up to today. So it would be something available to, to sort of check.
Thank you. And just before you ask the third question, I just need an extension of time. So can I get a move by Council McCarthy, a signature by Council Messina, all those in favour? That's correct unanimously. Thank you. And Ben, I'll go to your third question. Thank you.
Okay, my third question is related with the CEO of Darabin resigning two years into a five-year contract. And my understanding being that the CEO's salary was well in excess of $400,000 annually and by the end of the five-year contract would have been in excess of $500,000. Will council consider and commit to reducing CEO salaries going forward and redistribute those funds to the community that it is supposed to be serving?
Thank you for the question, Ben. I'm going to go to Anna for the response to that one.
Thank you, Mayor, and through you, and thanks for the feedback, Ben. This would be a decision for council as they seek to appoint, go through the, go through the process of selection and appointment of a new CEO.
Well, I'm asking the council.
Ben, you've received an answer, so I'll get you to resume your question, please.
Sorry, the answer has been that it's a question for council. Well, to clarify, Mayor, are these questions only to council officers and not to my elected councillors?
So we do generally get general managers to answer the questions? Yes, that's correct.
I will point you to my question, which is, will council commit to reducing CEO salaries? So it's a question for you and the councillors here.
Ben, you've received a response to your question and I'll ask you to resume your seat.
And you're happy with that on public record as a response to my?
Excuse me, Mayor.
I'd ask you to resume your seat, please.
Maybe Anna can explain that all CEOs, there is a range and depending on the population also. So there is a minimum and there is a maximum.
Set by whom?
Ben, I'll get you to resume your seat, please.
Counsel Williams, I'll get you to resume your seat, please. But it's not an easy thing.
Counsel Williams, I'll get you to resume your seat, please. Ben, would you resume your seat, please?
I mean, if you're ordering me to do so and not continue a conversation with an elected councillor, I suppose I don't really have much option. But I frankly am a bit flabbergasted that that is how you're choosing to deal with this. I think it's a pretty legit question and I think Counsel Williams is acknowledging the legitimacy of the question.
Ben, I would ask you to resume your seat, please.
I understand that's what you're asking me and I'm expressing to you why I think that that is not you doing your due governance diligence.
Ben, I'm asking you a final time. Will you resume your seat, please?
Yes, I will resume my seat.
Thank you. Counsel Williams, did you have anything to add?
Nothing further to add, but obviously, a question like that is quite complex and it's not straightforward, it's just popping out of figure. And it does vary from council to council, from municipality to municipality, depending on the population also.
Thank you. Counsel Williams, I'll get you to resume your seat. So we're now at the end of public question time and we'll now move on to submissions. So council's governance rules permit members of the public to register to address an ordinary council meeting in relation to matters listed on that agenda. In accordance with our governance rules, submissions can't be made in relation to notices of motion and urgent business. Thank you to those people who've registered their intention to do this. And we've received one request to make a submission. It's Geraldine Wood in the audience. No, okay, thanks, Robyn. So in that case, we don't have any submissions as the submitter is not here. So I'll move to item eight petition. So councils, we have one petition this evening. And before we call for the petition to be tabled, I did want to explain what the process of accepting a petition means. It is not council's role to vote in support or opposition of the content of the petition. Tonight, we simply perform a procedural function of accepting the petition and referring it to the CEO. Counsel Hannan, would you like to table the petition? Sorry.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Sorry, Counsel Hannan, I'll just respond to the question. Counsel, do you have a question?
Yes, I, I do have a question, particularly about the petition that's going to be tabled just now. Is it possible for council to actually remove a monument on private property? That's, is that a possibility? Is, is that a council role? Can officers do that? It'll just determine how I vote on this, sorry.
Thank you, Counsel Dimitratis. I will, before I go to Rachel, I will reiterate what I just said before. It might be useful to explain the process of accepting a petition. It is not council's role to vote in support or opposition of the content of the petition.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, I heard that. Yes, I certainly heard what you said. However, wouldn't it be governance that if the petition is asking us to do something that we can't, we don't have legal authority to do, wouldn't the petition be invalid? I'm just trying to work out whether that request is actually allowable.
So you want to confirm whether the petition can be accepted?
Yes, that's right. Do we have jurisdiction over what the petition is asking?
Thank you, Counsel Dimitratis. I'll go to Rachel, the acting CEO.
One of the things that we would assess on having a petition referred to officers are some of those questions. And I couldn't tell you on the face of the petition that I understand might be tabled tonight. I couldn't tell you on the face of it whether that was the case or not. We would need to assess it.
Thank you. Counsel Hannan, do you wish to move to table the petition? I apologize, Counsel Hannan. We have a question about petitions.
Regarding the, regarding the petition.
Do you have a question about the petition?
Yes, I do. Just in relation to our governance rules, if you look at clause 16.21D, I'd like to get some governance advice, whether the petition, and we've read the petition, all councillors have been privy to the petition, whether it is not related to a matter outside the powers of council. So we need some governance advice in relation to that because the petition, from what I can tell and from the mural that's in, in relation to, it's a piece of political art that's been overwhelmingly appreciated by the Darabin residents on private property. And in regards, and petition, the, the mural basically says, let Gaza live with a picture of a child in the face of the 40,000, 40,000 people that have been killed in Gaza, most of, most of them being women and children. So could I get some governance advice whether under 16.21D, this petition is a valid petition?
Thank you, Counsel Greco. Yes, you may. I'll just seek governance advice. Thank you. I'll, thank you for the question, Counsel Greco. And I'll go to Rachel, the acting CEO, for a response.
Thank you through you, Mayor. In some circumstances, council has powers to have, to have owners act to address the amenity of their building. So in this circumstance, it's not clear-cut and my view would be, would have to be assessed at the point something is referred to the organisation.
Thank you, Rachel. So on that basis, I do not see that this petition is invalid based on that advice. Counsel Hannan, would you like to move to table the petition?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I wish to table a petition concerning a mural on Mitchell Street, Northkot, as Counsel, uh, councillors have just referred to, to be referred to the CEO for consideration and response. I'd like, like, thank you.
I'd like to thank you, Mayor, for your introduction, reminding us all and those watching that this is a regular process that we have. It's part of our democratic process of basically recognising the views of residents. And I'd like to just reiterate that in putting forward this petition, I'm purely recognising the views of those petitioners and seeking that they be referred to the CEO for consideration and response. I'm not at all making any comment one way or the other in terms of the content. So just to describe the petition, it's been signed by approximately 16 people. I understand that it complies with council's governance rules and reads as follows. I'll read it out. It's just two sentences. It says, "We, the undersigned, ask of the City of Darabin for the removal slash overpainting of the mural on the corner of High Street and Mitchell Streets. The mural is an extreme political statement that is disturbing and offensive. It is divisive to our community." That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hannon. And do I have a second for the tabling of the petition? Councillor Rennie, thank you. And I'll put that motion to the vote. All those in?
Opportunity to debate the acceptance or otherwise of the petition?
I don't think I've ever been asked that before, so let me just double check. Councillor Greco, it's a procedural motion to table the petition to the CEO. So there's no opportunity to debate. And we'll go straight to the motion to vote. So all those in favour? That's councillor Hannon, councillor Rennie, councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy, councillor Messina, councillor Lawrence and councillor Newtton, all those against tabling the petition. And all those abstaining from tabling the petition, councillor Demetriades and councillor Greco. I declare the motion carried. I will now call on Steve Edwards as the submitter of the petition to make a two-minute submission. Steve has joined us online. Steve, please turn on your camera and microphone to make your submission. Thank you.
Sorry, Mayor. Aren't we supposed to hear the submission before we vote on the petition?
I'll ask for silence in the chamber, please. So councillor Demetriades, let me seek governance advice. My running sheet had the submitter afterwards, so let me just get advice. Councillor Demetriades, would it be helpful? Do you want to hear the petition and then vote again?
Sorry, Mayor, I'm just hoping that it's following governance advice.
So let me just check. Okay, we're just going to check the governance rules about that. Just give us a second. And audience, we'll just pause while we find the answer. So councillor Demetriades and all councillors, I'll read out the governance rule. So where the chief executive officer deems a petition to be valid in accordance with rule 16.1 and 16.2, the originator of a petition may make a submission for a period of two minutes once the petition has been formally tabled. So I hope that satisfies your question.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. That's perfectly fine. Although it did say that the CEO has to be reassured that the petition is valid. Yep. So that assumes that officers can actually do what the petition's asking.
So we've already, councillor Demetriades, we've already had advice that the petition can be tabled. We've voted on tabling the petition. The tabling of the petition has been accepted by council as a resolution. So now we'll be following the governance rules, which I'll read for you again. Where the chief executive officer deems a petition?
Thank you, Mayor. I did hear what you said.
Councillor Demetriades, please resume your seat. I'll repeat it so that you're clear.
No, that's fine, because usually the speeches are before the petition.
Councillor Demetriades, could you please stop talking? I have the floor. I'll repeat so that everyone in the audience is clear. The ruling is where the chief executive officer deems a petition to be valid in accordance with rules 16.1 and 16.2, the originator of a petition may make a submission for a period of two minutes once the petition has been formally tabled, which has just happened. So we will now go to Steve Edwards, who's online for your two-minute submission. Thank you, Steve. So I think we're having technical difficulties with getting Steve on the video. So what we'll do is we'll move on. But Georgie, if we do get Steve on, we can go back and hear his submission if we can find him. Thank you. So councillors, we do have a large agenda this evening that we need to get through in line with time limits in our governance rules. And I will remind you, we are close to the election period now, which starts on the 17th of September. So please be mindful of the rules, which are in section 304 of the Act in regards to how you are acting before the election. And I will be permitting questions of officers prior to the commencement of debate on each item. And if I think sufficient questioning has occurred, I'll exercise my right under the governance rules to limit questions and ask the debate to commence. We're going to go to item 9.1, the governance report, August 2024. I'm going to hand over to councillor Lawrence, the deputy mayor, to share this item as I have a conflict of interest in relation to knowing one of the members or who's applied for the climate emergency committee. Thank you.
Okay, welcome to the gallery and welcome to councillors and staff and those at home watching the council meeting. We're just dealing with the governance report for August 2024. Councillors, do I have any?
Deputy Mayor, could you please speak closer to the microphone? Thank you.
Certainly, councillor Greco. Do we have any questions from councillors of the officers regarding the governance report? I'm not seeing any. So if there's no further questions, we will commence the debate. I remind you, once we enter the debate, there'll be no further questions. So do I have a mover of the governance report? That's moved councillor Rennie, seconded councillor McCarthy. Does the mover wish to speak? You have three minutes.
Thank you, deputy mayor. I'll be quite brief and I assure you it won't take my three minutes. As usual, there are different items in this governance report. One that I found particularly interesting and draw people's attention to is the detailed breakdown of freedom of information requests that have come into council. And I think this is particularly interesting because it shows that there's no kind of binary, black or white answer to what happens to these requests, noting that some are granted in full, some are granted in part, some are denied, some are withdrawn. In some cases, there's an administrative release of the information, which means that it doesn't actually need the request. It can come out. And in some cases, no documents are actually found. And I think that this is very informative, particularly for people who are looking for information from council to understand all the possible ways in which a response might come. So I really recommend that to people. There's also information here about credit card transactions and reimbursements. We've got a CEO who has not shown any largesse because there were no expenses on the, or he, there is no corporate credit card and there were no reimbursement claims, which is fantastic. Interestingly, we do have the appointment of two new members to the Darabin Climate Emergency Advisory Committee. The assessment of who to appoint is not undertaken by councillors. That is undertaken by staff who look at and have regard to the skills, qualifications and experience of the people who apply. And they have recommended two people to us. These appointments will just be until June next year, when there will be a kind of spill of all positions of all advisory committees and reappointment. But that's good because we like to see our advisory committees operating at their best, and that involves having a full cohort of people. So I thank the staff for their work assessing those applications. But more importantly, I thank every community member who expressed interest in applying. We love seeing that enthusiasm in our community. And I might also encourage any community member who's not successful to actually have another go because sometimes, like anything, you don't get up onto a committee the first time. It doesn't mean it's not worth trying again. So on that basis, I commend the report to everyone.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. And does a second wish to speak?
I'll reserve my right, Mayor. Or acting Mayor.
Chair. Are there any councillors who wish to speak in opposition to the motion?
Sorry, Chair, I have a question and I'm sorry it's coming late. I've just realised what's happened here in terms of who's getting appointed. Can I ask a question that's, that will kind of determine how I vote on this? Sorry. That's not confidential.
Yeah. At the moment, we've already had debate. If you'd like to speak in opposition, you can speak in opposition and?
No, I, what I'm going to say is I'm going to be abstaining because I've just realised who's getting appointed on this committee. And it appears that it's someone who's actually already chosen to run for council. So it sounds a little?
The point of order, Mayor, this is inappropriate.
I'm sorry, I don't?
Deputy Chair, this is inappropriate. This is speaking about confidential item. If councillor Demetriades wishes to pursue this, we should move into confidential.
So I asked a question and I can't get an answer.
Are the names?
The names will become public, right?
Councillor Demetriades?
Sorry, it's just that Tom's referring to me. Yes.
If you want to speak in opposition to the motion, you can do that and make your points. I would caution you from making comments about individuals.
I'm not making comments about individuals. It's a general statement that I'm making that people who have chosen to run for council, endorsing them to be on a committee so close to an election is not something that we, when we clearly know that some of these candidates that have chosen to run, it may be an issue. So I will be abstaining on this one. I'm certainly not supporting it. I think it's bad governance again.
Okay, thank you, councillor Demetriades. And are there any other speakers to this motion?
Deputy Mayor, could you please speak? I'm sorry to insist on this. Could you please speak closer to the microphone? Because I have difficulty hearing.
Yep. So are there any other speakers to this motion? No? If there's no other speakers?
Deputy Mayor, if I may, given the point that councillor Demetriades has raised, I was wondering whether we can actually separate the items on the on the resolution and vote on them separately. Because I have some concerns about one particular item, but I like to endorse all the other items.
Can you, councillor Greco, to assist me get advice from the officers? Can you identify the item you have reluctance on? Which item do you have a reluctance on?
I'm just asking for the items to be split. And I'll tell you which item it is in a moment. Just let me locate it. If item seven can be voted on separately to the other six items.
Thank you for identifying that, councillor Greco. I'm just going to just check whether that's procedurally possible. Just a moment. Okay, councillors, I realise we've got a long, we've got quite a few things on the agenda today. So I'm going to move the governance report with items one to six first. And I'll carry out a second vote for seven. Okay, if we can do that. So again, if there's no, did you wish to speak to this motion, to this agenda item? No? Okay. I'll now be putting the motion in two parts. I'll be putting one to six, the substantive part of the governance report for acceptance by councillors or otherwise. So all those in favour of the governance report one to six. Okay, so that's carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. We now move on to moving the second part of the governance report. The second part of the governance report is item seven, that was identified by councillor Greco. I think at this point, we have had speakers on this issue. So I'll just move to put it, those in favour of governance report item seven. Okay, so I've got councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy, councillor Messina, councillor Rennie and myself in favour. Those councillors voting against this governance report item seven. I've got councillor Demetriades against, and those councillors abstaining. And I have councillor Hannon and councillor Greco abstaining. Thank you, councillors. I think we've dealt with that. That's now been recorded. And I'll now vacate the chair for the mayor to come back.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Lawrence, for chairing that item. We now have 9.2, the Community Engagement Improvement Plan and policy review, the engagement outcome. So we've got questions for this item. Councillor Messina?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor, I have several questions in relation to this item. First of all, I'd like to know in relation to, well, basically Darabin is a very diverse municipality and there's many people from different walks of life that reside here. How do we address the average in terms of weighting and ratios and random sampling and proportionality when it comes to ensuring that community engagement is actually equal to the residents that reside here?
Thank you. Anna, would you like to respond to that one?
Sure. Thank you, through you, Mayor. Thanks for the question, councillor Messina. I guess this is a community engagement improvement plan which identifies areas where we can improve our community engagement. So we have goal three, which is entirely devoted to diverse communities to make sure that we're reaching out. And there are around eight actions of the 25 actions specifically designed to, I guess, address the gaps in underrepresented groups that we hear from. This plan is really around changing the way that we think about audiences and really stepping up the qualitative side of things. So that's really about making sure that we're having much more meaningful conversations with members of our community. I know that there are varying views around metrics. We don't believe that this is the way to go in terms of this piece of work. We do believe that the qualitative approach is how we will get better results and certainly something that we've heard from our advisory committees. We've heard this also from our equity impact assessment work as well. So the metrics are not something we report on, but certainly before we approach every community engagement, we look at who is the community that we're talking to? If it's a place-based item, if it's a municipality-wide, that's a different sort of thought process. But it's really about who is it that we're talking to? What are the best tactics to reach that audience? How do we go to the community to have some of those meaningful conversations?
Thank you, Anna. Councillor Messina, do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, I have a few, sorry.
Yes, I have a few, sorry. My next question is, and thank you Anna, my next question is, it's often a barrier to address and meet the multicultural groups, especially the ones that come from war-torn areas that don't like speaking to government. And we know that's a challenge. Barriers are also addressed when Darabim City Council addressed a climate emergency. And I don't want to use comparatives, but we're often this council that breaks barriers is what I'm trying to say. So how do we do that collectively moving forward? Because we often hear from those on social media, often hear from certain Facebook groups. We often hear from the same people. How do we address those barriers that need to be broken down so that we make decision on behalf of all custodians of ratepayers' monies? Not just those ones that want to have the loudest voice, but necessarily do not reflect the whole of the municipality?
Thank you councillor Messina. And I think the report does explicitly speak about going beyond the loudest voices. Councillor Messina, I'm the chairperson of the meeting.
I asked a question.
Councillor Messina, I'm the chairperson of the meeting. And before we go to Anna, I would like to add that it is in the report that it speaks about going beyond just hearing from the loudest voices. I will now go to Anna for the formal response, thank you.
Thank you through you, Mayor. Thanks for the question councillor Messina. So it is, I'm going to be open and say it's a really challenging issue. I don't think it's realistic that we will hear from all voices in the community. And I know that this is something that local governments find challenging. Certainly, the intent of this plan is to try to find out what are the innovative ways we can do it. Some of the capacity building ideas that we've had through working with community advisory committees. We've done a lot of engagement with diverse communities. For example, some of those ideas are really around, so for example, doing some training with our staff members so that they are able to facilitate in a culturally safe way, working with different tactics to make sure that we're reaching those audiences. We do find that sometimes people don't want to speak to us, but it's really about us being visible in multi-different, on all sorts of channels. So some people might have a preference for online, but we know there are some groups that that's certainly not their preference. So that's what this is about, really about getting some of those ideas up about how do we be on the radar? How do we make it safe and inclusive for people to engage with us? And certainly, we will be constantly reviewing how we're working in this space. But it is a four-year plan to help us get better in this space.
Thank you, Anna. Councillor Messina, I do need to go to all councillors. I'll allow you to ask two more questions. And you do have an opportunity for debate later, so please do just stick to questions, thank you.
Thank you. How are we going... Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your honesty, Anna. I really appreciate it. What I'd like to know is how are we as a council going to address any KPIs or any feedback based on moving forward, please?
Thank you, Anna O'Grady.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor, I think I kind of touched on that earlier with the metrics. But certainly as part of, one of the key initiatives of this work is around closing the loop and that iterative learning. So who did we hear from? Who didn't we hear from? How could we have done that better? So there's that continuous loop learning for us as well in all of this. But certainly, there's also, we don't just put engagement out and not review the progress of that. We have a look at who's responding and how we might be able to reach other audiences as part of that process while we're live in engagement when it's not too late.
Thanks, Anna. And councillor Messina, I'll go to your last question.
My last question, Mayor, is I'm just wondering how the new... There was an announcement on the weekend that there is going to be a new multicultural framework that, thank you Minister, sorry, the Premier Justin Allen announced. So how are we going to move forward to ensure... Because we don't have that document, I haven't seen it. But how do we move forward to ensure that we also strengthen that, this particular framework? Again, so it's a live document. So how do we ensure that this continues to be a live document?
That's a great question. I'll go to you, Anna, thank you.
Thank you through you, Mayor. It's difficult to give you an exact response this because we haven't seen the work and what's in the framework. From what's been explained to me, it sounds like an exciting piece of work. I guess we could, once we see the work and understand what's within that framework, we could make sure that if there are learnings that would strengthen this community engagement plan and help us to have further reach, then we certainly could look at ways to incorporate and integrate that work.
Thank you, Anna. Thank you councillor Messina. And do you have any further questions councillor Greco? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Newton. I had a question through you, Mayor, to our officers. It's a very important document, as we all know, and consultation is one of the things that we really need to improve on. The question relates to, there's reference to panels, setting up panels. And there's also reference to in the report about the representativity of the panel. And also in relation to that, it talks about the development of a business case in relation to that representativity of the panel. I'd just like to know what will be the considerations of the, that will form part of the business case? And will that business case come back to council for consideration?
Thank you councillor Greco. I'll go to Anna for the response.
Thank you through you, Mayor. Thanks for the question councillor Greco. We haven't quite finalised what would be in that business case. There would probably need to be some work that we did to do to research that. I think from memory, some of those items were later in the improvement plan. But certainly, this is a topic that's, I know, very important to councillors. And I don't see why it couldn't come back to council for input and endorsement.
Thank you, Anna. Councillor Greco, do you have any further questions? No, thank you. Councillors, are there any further questions? No, okay. Thank you to councillor Messina and councillor Greco for those questions. So we will commence the debate. And I remind you that once we enter the debate, there'll be no further questions. So do we have a mover councillor Messina? Are you moving in the officer's recommendation or an alternative?
The officer's recommendation, which was circulated earlier, my understanding.
Thank you. Can we get the alternative motion on screen, please? Councillor Messina, is this your alternative motion? So with points six and seven about the multicultural framework initiative and the necessary adjustments to the minimum standards of engagement?
That is, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have councillor Renney? I don't know that I've seen seven.
Thank you, Mayor, with your indulgence. I wonder if now that we have an alternative, I might ask a question.
Yes, you may, because I'm not sure that I've seen point seven before. Councillor Messina, did you circulate that?
I don't, point seven, I thought, because I did speak to Anna during the day. I thought that mentioned the KPI that we addressed in term... No, so that's not my...
Sure, so you've got point six, right?
Point six, yes. Which I assumed point seven was the additional that I asked for.
Yeah, so governance team, councillor Messina's alternative motion is just the extra point six, not the point seven. Thank you. Councillor Renney, does that clarify? Have you seen the point six?
Yes, I have, thank you. My question was in relation to point seven, so I have no question if that's not there.
Thank you. Councillor Messina, you've moved. Do we have a second for the alternative motion? Councillor Williams, thank you. And councillor Messina will go to your debate, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the officers. This is really extensive work. And what I love about it is that it is organic, but it is to consider those that we haven't heard from before. And I know I've asked lots of questions before tonight and even during the course of today. This is about ensuring that the voices of our municipality and the data that reflect our decision-making process moving forward is reflective of everybody that... Well, the most, the percentages in terms of random sampling and proportionality that represents Darabim City Council, Darabim municipality, sorry. We don't often hear from those voices. I'd like to see much more from that community that we don't often hear from. We know that there are reports that often come to council and councillors ask for more engagement. And this is what I hope moving forward that's going to be, is that we're going to have a framework that engages and strengthens what we're already doing. We don't, we're not going to do it perfectly, but it's about ensuring that we capture as much as we can. It's about trying to break down those barriers and moving forward and having an organic process to ensure that any council moving forward, not just this council today, makes decisions based on the whole of municipality.
Thank you very much councillor Messina. I'll go to councillor Williams, a second.
I'll be very brief, knowing that we do have a large agenda. It is extremely fitting that we have won the award for welcoming cities. Here in Darabim, there's over 158 different languages spoken here in this municipality. And it's always challenging to get the right people engaging and getting community consultation and their feedback of what they would like to see and build here in Darabim. But because we've won an award, does that make us complacent? No. We have people who have come from multiple backgrounds, including myself, from a Maltese background, and councillor Messina from Italian background, and many others here this evening and those who are watching online. It shows that we want to ensure that we continue being at the top and the forefront in being a very inclusive, multicultural, diverse community and council. And we need to keep striving and we need to keep pushing to ensure that we are hearing from our most vulnerable, from people who, English is not their first language, English is their second language. And it's really important that we continue doing that. And our officers do a great job in doing it. But we do ask to try to do more because we want to continually to be at the top in reference to this side of hearing feedback for those who are most vulnerable and those who don't usually communicate with different levels of government. So thank you.
Thank you councillor Williams. Do we have any further speakers? Councillor Greco?
Thank you, Mayor Newton. I have an amendment that I'd like to put forward. I distributed that earlier this afternoon and I'm hoping that it comes up on the screen.
Thank you.
And I'll be seeking a second or the mover and the second to embrace my changes into the substantive motion.
Thank you. Have we got councillor Greco's proposed amendment? Councillor Greco, is this your amendment? So receives an annual update on the implementation of the Community Engagement Improvement Plan over the next three years.
Yes.
Thank you. Is that acceptable to you? And councillor Williams, is that acceptable? Thank you. That becomes the substantive item. So are there any further speakers to the substantive? Councillor Greco? And then I'll go to councillor Hannon. Councillor Greco, your hand was first, so I'll go to you first and then I'll go to councillor Hannon.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to the mover and the second for accepting that amendment. A small amendment, but a very important one because we need to track the effectiveness of this three-year strategy and this implementation improvement plan that will be put in place. Look, first, I would like to thank the officers for the extensive amount of work that's been done. It's a very difficult area in terms of consultation. We're not the only council that has issues with consultation. But whilst it is a difficult area, it's also not rocket science. There's a lot of examples out there that we can learn from. And looking at the implementation plan, it's quite an extensive one. And there are very quick wins on the implementation plan, but there are more sort of systemic strategies that are part of that implementation plan that really need to be put into place. Why is this important? Well, we know that the Minister for Local Government has actually noted that this is one of the issues that Darabim Council needs to lift its game on. Also, if we look at the performance measures, it's something that we've slightly slipped back on, that we need to make ground on. But apart from all that, it's just important in itself in order to ensure that we embrace the various aspirations of a cross-section of our community. This council is not like any other council. Nearly 60% of the people that live in the city of Darabim come from a non-English speaking background. And over 30% of people were born overseas. So we have a particular responsibility. It's not just an acute thing to do or a nice thing to do to be more consultative. It's a necessary thing to do. And I'm glad that in the report, language like a business case has been used because it is part of our core business to consult with our community, which happens to be diverse. So it's incumbent on us to actually do that work and ensure that we get a broad representation. The only other point that I would make, and I'll bring this to the attention to our officers, is that we've got to be careful that the consultation processes are not skewed towards digital forms of consultation, online surveys and webpages and things like that. Because of the nature of our community, that we need an even hand between digital form of consultation and face-to-face consultation, which our community has told us that they want to see more of. Because until we, if we skew it more towards digital, then we're going to get a biased form of representation from our community. That to me is a very key point because that will determine the balance and the quality of the consultation and the representativeness of the representation that comes forward. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Greco. And just confirming, it is over 50% that have at least one parent born overseas. Councillor Hannon, I'll go to you, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to commend the staff for all the work that's been undertaken on this plan. Like similar to previous councillors, I'd like to acknowledge that this is, you know, challenging and complex work, but it's something that we aspire to, to as far as possible represent the voices of all residents and people in Darabim in our engagements. I'd like to again commend the organisation on achievement of the welcoming cities accreditation. And, you know, the fact that, well, again, while Darabim is not perfect in this area, we're actually the first council in Australia to receive the excelling standard, which really is a testament to our approach to inclusiveness in our facilities, our services, our programmes. And this is an independent and external, quite rigorous assessment that council has achieved. So again, I really commend the staff for doing the work to not rest on their laurels and to continue to improve in this area. I was going to go through some of the areas that have been proposed. In the interest of time, I won't, but there is, I would just say that there is a very comprehensive table of actions. This is a very practical and action-based plan, extends over two pages, over three-year timescale. Everything, as councillor Greco said, from systemic to quite specific areas of improvement. In relation to the amendment, the last one, which has been added about annual update, of course, you know, knowing you're having a plan if you don't check on it, I would just assume that that can be incorporated into regular quarterly and annual planning without the need to expend additional resources on this one activity. I'll leave it there, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you councillor Hannon. Are there any further speakers on this item? No. I'll close the debate as well. So I'm also very proud of the welcoming cities accreditation. And I think we're very, very fortunate of the work that our staff have done to get us to this point. And I think we should be very, very proud of that. And our role as a leadership council, one of the leading councils, not just in Victoria in this space, but in Australia. So I really want to commend staff for their incredible work over many years for that. One thing I'm excited about with the Community Engagement Improvement Plan is the leadership programme that's been discussed. I think that's something where you could have a really, really tangible improvement if you are bringing leaders from different communities together to talk about how to communicate with their different communities. I think that's fantastic. When I was thinking about this tonight, there is a particular topic that I might talk about. It's a little bit sensitive, but it's family violence. And I've spoken to the Darabim Ethnic Communities Council about this topic recently. And they expressed to me that it is challenging for people from diverse communities to know where to go, who to speak to and how to communicate this. to go, who to speak to and how to communicate this issue. So they're going to be holding an event on the 31st of August at 2pm at our Intercultural Centre to discuss this topic with diverse and migrant communities. We've been doing work in this space too. We got a grant. Vicky Ward, the Minister for the Prevention of Family Violence, came to Darabim to talk to us about that grant. It's going to mean that we've got a person in place who can really help train people on this issue. I was also in Canberra last week and spoke about this issue with the Assistant Minister for Prevention of Family Violence, Justine Elliott, because what we're hoping is the Northern Council's Alliance is that you can have a staff member in every single council that is focused on training for family violence. And my view would be that this Community Engagement Improvement Plan is a perfect place to look at that. So I will close the debate there, and I commend the report to councillors. So we will now go to the vote. So all those in favour? That's carried unanimously. Thank you. Councillors, we'll now go to 9.3, the Darabim Economic Framework Draft. And councillors, do we have questions? Councillor Messina?
Questions? I was going to move it.
Sure. Councillors, do we have questions on the Economic Framework Draft? No, it's very comprehensive. Thank you to the staff. And councillor Messina, you wanting to move the officer's recommendation? And that's fine. Do we have a second for that? Councillor Lawrence? Councillor Messina, I'll go to you.
Thank you. Firstly, I want to thank my fellow councillors for supporting and recognising the importance of our business community. Secondly, to Kylie and Dynamic Valley and the team who facilitated the workshops and researched the data. Thirdly, and most importantly, the business community who participated and provided their valued feedback. This council collectively thanks you. This report includes, which is Darabim's economic profile, includes Darabim's economic profile, competitive advantages by industries, local economic drivers and the economic research. The report showcases international case studies. The report identifies four priority areas. One, empowering small business to sustainable growth. The strategic goals around that and how does council enable partnerships that support business of all scales for sustainable growth and workforce equity, sorry. Two, collaborative mainstream revitalisation. How does council collaborate for social and economic revitalisation and grow local stewardship? Three, mobilise partnerships, clusters and localised supply chains to grow community wealth. How does council mobilise partnerships, clusters and supply chains to grow? Four, activate enterprise clusters for growth. Activate cluster supports transition to and from for optimising land use for long-term prosperity. So what's next? A representative group to be recruited from the ERI process, which will be done in about, approximately in November, which includes various different entrepreneurs and experts from different sectors. So why is this important? We know that for an economy to, and a community to thrive, we need to ensure its residents and business sector thrive. And Darabim's economic framework is built on do-it-in-Darabim, I remember that during the workshops, and is a framework where business thrives and prosperity stays within the Darabim community. Because we all know that there are many sectors in our community, many of those represent also our youth. We have, I think, I think the numbers indicated that we had a high unemployment youth in Darabim, so 12.8%. And in fact, it is that, that's where we should be targeting. We should be actually assisting the youth on how to grow and keep their job prospects here in Darabim. Because we know that the economic framework, not only in terms of our landscape, is going to change. We have a lot more older people that are residing in Darabim and a lot of youth coming in. Housing affordability is simply not there. So we need to ensure for our municipality to thrive, that we're going to have, number one, social connection and places of activity, where we've got different demographics, different intergenerational people living in our municipality, to address, number one, the knowledge. Number two, not only the services sector, but also we need state government to ensure that our infrastructure, and we need to also ensure that we have a thriving community in terms of solid, built form, social connection, services, and we also need to address our economic and our residents.
Thank you very much, councillor Messina, and for your ongoing advocacy in this area. And I'll go to the second, councillor Lawrence.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Newton. And thank you to councillor Landon Messina. I know she has a lot of passion and drive around small business and around entrepreneurship. I think this is really good work that's come out of the offices. It's really challenging. It's a very challenging time, post-COVID, post-work-from-home, post, well, let's say, Darabim was once a 30% to 40% manufacturing hub. That's changed. It ended up with education, health and building services and a range of industries. Now, looking forward, it's even more complex than six sectors. So, and of course, you know, we used to always be thinking, oh, how do we get a big employer to come here? How do we get big supermarkets? How do we do this? How do we do that? You know, to replace the big factories or big uni, to replace the big uni. Well, going forward, it's so complex because actually, you know, in this day and age, you could end up with more foreign students here, that is, local students here studying in foreign universities, because we're just moving into a whole different age. And so the fact that we've still got 60% going to the city to work isn't as bad as it used to be, because some of them can actually become work from home. And we're talking about the dynamics and flexibilities of that, which we saw, and some residents really benefited from during the lockdown. So I think it's going to be an interesting journey. I think it's got to be not like the past. We're not just going from one industry to six. It's going to be a really diverse thing. And of course, we must mention our hospitality and food. Embedded on our Middle Eastern, European, Asian culture is also going to be a more and more huge advantage.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Are there further speakers to the item? Councillor McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to sort of echo the sentiments of other councillors who've already spoken, thanking those who have participated in this whole process to get us to this point. Obviously, we have the great work of our council officers, also the businesses, both small, medium and larger enterprises. And I'd also like to do a particular shout-out to the social enterprises who have absolutely carried significant parts of this community through the challenging COVID period, through being able to pivot, shift their business model, and I think create opportunity where otherwise the private sector couldn't step up. So a huge shout-out to them. The report tells us quite a few things, Mayor, and I think it's worth pointing out the big numbers here that we actually do have and do enjoy in Darabim. We have actually over, almost 14,000 registered businesses in the city of Darabim that are actually registered locally. So that's not the number of business properties, but that's actually the number of businesses that actually have a business address here. Of those, and this is probably the most significant figure, I think, which is really, we need to get our head around here, that the total number of jobs attached is actually over 61,000. So we are talking about a lot of people who are employed locally in Darabim, who call this locally, but also significantly, the vast majority of these, 98% in fact, are small businesses. And I think we need to understand what that is. That's not shop fronts, that's actually home-based businesses. It's people that are running a small business, they may be the sole operator, they may employ someone else, part-time or casual, they would love to employ more if they could. They're often working in isolation, or they are finding ways to connect with others. These are the people, in fact, who are making an enormous difference. And they are also part of the future of work, which is about, obviously, flexibility, it's about entrepreneurship, but it's also about connection. And if we can create spaces as the framework outlines that support these people, we will grow more jobs in Darabim. So commendations to all. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Are there further speakers to the item? Councillor Greco?
Thank you, Mayor Newton. Yeah, again, as the other speakers have said, I'd like to thank the officers for bringing us to this level of development in the strategy. Look, I'd just like to outline a few observations that really struck me in regards to this strategy. The top, of the top three industries, interestingly, construction was the top industry, which was an interesting, you know, thing. I never would have thought that. And I think of that in light of, we're going to be addressing a gender item later on, where construction in our city is going to double as a result of trying to meet the state government's housing objective. And so construction will be a particular area where we should take interest in fostering and also catering for, to ensure that it delivers jobs. And within that construction area of work, it's mainly small construction firms of one to four employees, so they're small business. So that, to me, was a really interesting observation and something that we should look at. The other observation that struck me was about trying to reduce the economic leakage in our city. And what that means is that activity centres in our city, only 15% to 20% of visitors are from Darabim. And it would be great if that could be increased. That's something that is a little bit within our control in terms of how we promote our city and how we promote the activity centres. And also, what was noted by a lot of the businesses that were consulted was that the foot traffic in our city is declining. And again, there could be a number of factors there, but that is something that is a bit within our control in terms of how attractive we make our city to increase the foot traffic, which in turn then increases the business activity in our city. Thank you.
It's time. Thank you, councillor Greco. Are there any further speakers? No further speakers? Okay. I'll just wrap up. I think a lot of good stuff has been said already. I'm really impressed by this economic framework. I think it is exactly what we need in Darabim right now, when I think businesses are doing it really tough, costs are going up. I'm aware of some businesses that are really struggling at the moment. We were voted coolest street in the world this year with High Street, but, you know, today I was opposite Surakhas and I saw four vacant shops in a row, empty, just opposite there on High Street. So I think the timing for this economic framework couldn't be better because those businesses and those shops need support. But as councillor McCarthy pointed out, it's not just about High Street shops, this is about 98% of Darabim business being home-based. Councillor Messina, I think you're in that boat here as well. I'm really impressed that there was climate emergency and sustainability principles all through this document. I think that our businesses, some of our incredible leaders in this space, that other businesses learn from, I really appreciate the networks that happen through that. I think councillor Greco mentioned about keeping investment local, that's incredibly important, and I really commend the staff for their work on that. For me, we do also have to consider that Big 17, though, the group that has more than 200 staff in Darabim, because it's not easy for them either. So we work quite closely with La Trobe University. They're very dependent on the amount of international students that come here. So I would say as Darabim, we're really keen to support them in any advocacy about making sure that the international students are still coming, so that La Trobe University, which is one of our biggest employers, can thrive. I really like the idea of clusters, health clusters, co-working hubs, and really having those jobs close to home, which councillor Lawrence has talked about. I really like the idea of a 20-minute city, and I think we're going to keep working towards that, and we're going to get that foot traffic back. And I think this economic framework is going to help with that. So I'll wrap it up there. Big thanks to the team. We'll go to the vote for this one. All those in favour? That's carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors, and thank you to the officers for this great work. We'll go to 9.4, the Families, Youth and Children Strategy Report Back from Stage Two Engagement and Proposed Final Strategy. Thank you. Councillors, do we have any questions of the team about the Families, Youth and Children Strategy? Any questions? That speaks to what must be a very good report. So, thank you, Jo and David. So we'll go straight to the debate. So I remind you, once we enter the debate, there'll be no further questions. So do I have a mover of the motion? Councillor McCarthy, moving the officer's recommendation. Thank you. And councillor, sorry, councillor Hanan, I saw your hand next for seconding, so councillor McCarthy, I'll go to you as mover.
Thanks, Mayor. And I think it is probably testament to the fact that this report has been brought to us at briefings, it's been subjected to considerable consultation. In fact, I just want to draw out one of the big numbers here because it sort of blows my mind a little bit. 1,000 community members and stakeholders over two stages have been involved in helping us get to this stage that we are here tonight, which is, of course, bringing together a strategic piece that previously sat in different buckets, and I think it's worth naming that as well. So we're talking about our family, youth and children's strategy, really bringing that whole of community focus in, and really understanding the different settings where we get to engage. And I think it's a really important role that council plays as the strategy, and I think the consultation is outlined. But it's actually the nature of the complexity of those settings that is where the really important work happens, and why we need to get this stuff right, which is why it's been valuable to take the time that we have. And also, I think, to do things a little bit differently. So to recognise that there has been some really important engagement with younger people, with different cohorts of younger people, with children, and finding ways to bring voices to the table in a way that's meaningful, that's not tokenistic. I'm not going to go through all of the report and the strategy. Mayor, I do want to just highlight the fact that there has been some change from the original draft to the version that we have now, including some refinement around both the themes, guiding principles and action areas. So we've had, I think, a good example of how, when you go out and talk, there is input, there is consultation, there is engagement, and there is actually also some genuine transformation where there is opportunity to strengthen elements as well. Probably the thing that I've really struck by is how important this particular strategy is when it considers the partnerships and those who we need to work with and work with well in order to deliver what is required. I just want to just highlight the four guiding principles, Mayor, just before I finish up, which is just to talk about the importance of community leadership, collaborative and responsive support system, cultural safety and equity. Each of those things is important. They're not placed one on top of another. They all have their own elements as critical principles, but they set us up for understanding that we have a range of different family types, a range of different experiences for children and young people, and we need to have a responsive system, both within this council environment, but also in our partnerships, to make sure that we are responding to the different needs of different cohorts. And last but not least, I'll just say that this is a strategy that does set us up for the future, but it actually builds on really important work. And I just want to pay homage to all those who have been doing this work without this strategy in place and delivering great outcomes, and congratulations all.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. And I'll go to the second, councillor Hanan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to echo everything that councillor McCarthy said, and just to build on just a few points. As councillor McCarthy said, the report has been structured under the four guiding principles. And this was actually something that came back through feedback on the previous draft, to have five clear action areas under those guiding principles. So number one, essentials for life, number two, inclusion and belonging, number three, health and wellbeing, number four, safety and independence, and number five, learning, which really cover all aspects of, you know, the state, issues and stages for that group as well as the outcomes that we'd like to see as council. I know from reading the report, there was a stronger focus following consultation on affordable housing, promotion of mental health and wellbeing, preventing violence against women and children, supporting young people's independence and lifelong learning. And as councillor McCarthy said, I'd just like to commend this new way of doing things, the integrated way of doing things across the different stages of ages and family stages and types. And particularly work in collaboration with partnering organisations such as our, not our, but childcare centres and neighbourhood houses. I say our, they're part of the Darabim community, but they're actually external to council and independent organisations. We work collaboratively with to deliver much of the services and programmes in this area. So I really just like to thank staff and commend their work in putting this together. Thank the, all the members, all the organisations taking part in the Strategy Reference Group, all the members of the Darabim Young Citizens Jury, and the many people who provided input to this strategy. I commend it to council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hanan. Have I got further speakers to this item? No further speakers? I feel like I commend this every time, but it really is great work, it's strategic. The input that you got from stakeholders, from young people, is really amazing, and I think you see it all through the report. I think for me as well, it really relates to the Community Engagement Improvement Plan that we talked about before, because if you think about who we don't really see in the council chamber, or certainly in my day-to-day, it is often younger people. And I think this really shifts that, hopefully. It was wonderful speaking to the youth jury through this process, and meeting stakeholders that work in this area every day. Young people and children should not be separate from council, they're perhaps our most important cohort, and I really hope that this sets us in the right direction for the future, and I really commend the report to you councillors, thank you. So we'll go to the vote on this item, all those in favour. It's carried unanimously, thank you councillors, and thank you, Jo, Dave and the team. We'll go to 9.5, the Plan for Victoria and Housing Targets Submission. Councillors, do we have any questions of officers on this very topical item? Councillors, any questions? No? Okay, that's fine. We will go straight to the debate, and I remind you, once we enter the debate, there'll be no further questions. So do we have a mover of this motion? Councillor Lawrence, and do we have a seconded councillor McCarthy? Councillor Lawrence, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Newton. This, yeah, thank the officers for going through this detailed report and response, in particular to the notion of targets. As has been said, the target for Darabin is 72,000 additional dwellings to our existing 70,000. Our current strategies that have come about through four yearly consultations on our, you know, actual structure plans and our actual planning scheme, our local planning scheme, which fits within the Victorian planning scheme, have been to get community acceptance for a target of 28,000 housing units, that could be houses or flats. And that's almost a 44% growth rate over the long term. So we've succeeded in getting buy-in by the community over that, and consensus around utilising old industrial sites, tramways and transit corridors, in developments that have ranged from two, three, four, six, eight, 12 stories. We've seen only a few 18 around. So that strategy really, it's almost a Mediterranean strategy, I suppose, that some of the most visited cities in the world are six stories, and they preserve their spaces, their humanity, their street life, anyway. Yeah, so that's, you know, reflects the experiences of our community too here. So that's what we've had the preference for, and this is asking us to double that. And at the moment, we've been doing detailed work on these structure plans, up and down St George's Road, High Street, Plenty Road, it's been years and years of work to slowly bring the community around to a greater density. And as the report points out, we actually lack the demand and the economic drivers, the investment, to realise that. So the targets that they're asking us to submit to, adopt, kowtow to, actually don't reflect economic reality, and are two and a half times greater than what is actually happening. Now, and it was also an issue about, having had an eight-year, 10-year conversation with people, to densify this city, make it have more people, make it more lively, I think the officers have done a nuanced argument back to the government about what's realistic about developing in the city. And I would say, I'm very concerned, post-lockdown, post kind of people feeling they're losing control, that we could ruin the consensus we've built around building densification here, and multi-story and medium stories and developments. I'm very concerned it's a bit too crude. So I know the officers won't say things like that, but I've just been, I've got so many letters and feedback from the community about, don't double Darabin, don't wreck it. And actually, quite a lot of people, obviously through our conversations through the planning department over years, accept a 50% growth target, but doubling it just sounds, even the construction guys say it's just unrealistic, because the tradesmen aren't there, the conditions aren't there, and also, as a multi-generation city, this is a great city of three generations all the time, we want quality constructions, whether they're flats or houses. And, you know, we need the conditions and we need some quality in the planning outcomes to get that.
Thank you councillor Lawrence, that's time. Thank you for that. And our seconded was councillor McCarthy, we'll go to you.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm going to go straight to what council is asking for here, just really to follow on from councillor Lawrence, but also to really hone in on the critical changes that I think we are calling for through this submission. And it shouldn't come as any surprise, these are things that are well-grounded in council's policy and advocacy positions going back a long time, but I think they're really well-focused. So I'm just going to run through them, and I think it's really important that we do run through these, because these are exactly the sorts of things that we're hoping those with the power to make changes around what's proposed can hear. So in addition, obviously, to underpinning and underlining the critical role that council plays as a partner to the state government, in a measured, considered, and I think trust-rich approach to building that community consensus, here are some of the critical things that we're calling for. One is to include mandatory affordable housing requirements in the planning scheme. This is something which we have talked about for many years, throughout my whole time on council, we've spoken about mandatory affordable housing requirements, or inclusion rezoning is the other term. And of course, understanding value capture as part of that, to actually deliver on real precinct planning in the local area. Getting a balance between fast-tracking new housing and sustainable design and community input. Supporting local businesses to embrace circular economy practices, and actually looking at how we make sure that we get that mixture of economic activity. Investing in frequent and more reliable public transport services, and prioritising active transport users through movement and place frameworks. So this is all about thinking about how people get around implementing our statewide elevated ESD standards. Councils have been investing themselves in this work, it is time to bring this to the state level and bring that consistency. It delivers confidence and it delivers certainty for everyone. And lastly, strengthening res code by expanding tree canopy requirements, implementing a more effective and consistent state-led approach to managing flood risks and other climate hazards across the state. Mayor, I present those advocacy asks, support what councillor Lawrence has said about the critical role that council can play, and ask that decision-makers also take these on board as well.
Thank you councillor McCarthy. Have we got further speakers? Councillor Masina.
Thank you. I'm just going to do a little bit of a U-turn, and the U-turn is around Preston Market. I think it's critical to acknowledge, and it's quintessential to actually to acknowledge that Darabin City Council did a lot of advocacy work on the market, and the market, and not only for planning matters around Darabin, this housing target submission hasn't really changed our way of thinking. For the last two council terms, we've been pretty firm on our direction, just as we've been on Preston Market. I'm really concerned that the new turn in terms of the housing that's coming to Darabin, what is that going to mean to the market itself? I was there yesterday, it is slowly dying a death. There's a lot that's happening there at the moment, in terms of a lot of vacant spaces. It is critical for the new council that comes on board to address what's happening at the market, and it reflect our advocacy position, and reflect to ensure that the state government's will to build more doesn't counteract our advocacy and our passion for the market, and how much we've fought for it for such a long time. And I'm hoping that the new council, whoever they are that are elected, will not forget that, but also ensure that the state, the developer and council, sit on a table and work out what's going to happen there, and ensure that there is a master plan, and deliver, and not just build and just get rid of the market altogether and put in the houses.
Thank you councillor Masina. Have we got further speakers on the Plan for Victoria and Housing Targets Submission? No? Okay, councillor Eni, you're fine. So I will wrap up. So I think this is about what we want our future of Darabin to look like. We were the first council to declare a climate emergency, and we know that the building and construction sector is the largest emitter of greenhouse gases, and they account for 37% of global emissions. So how we build in the future is incredibly important. We're a council that genuinely, deeply cares about mandatory affordable housing, social housing and public housing, that's through the document, and we really need to keep pushing that, because recently we have had social housing that was promised for Preston has just been cancelled, and that will be sold to a private developer. This is public land that is being sold off, that is within our community. This is incredibly disappointing, but as Darabin council, we will continue pushing for good standards, we'll continue pushing for the building industry to reduce their emissions, we will continue to fight for what councillor Lawrence was talking about, which is this idea of doubling housing stock in Darabin. We need a commensurate investment in infrastructure if that is going to happen. The schools are already full, open space is already lacking. We will continue to fight for more investment in infrastructure from the state government and from the federal government. I was disappointed to read this week that we've done our social housing...
Sorry, point of order, Mayor.
Yes, councillor Dimitriadis.
Yes. Well, in regards to the...
What is your point of order?
Yes, I noticed that previously...
Sorry councillor Dimitriadis, which point of order are you referring to?
It's become a tedious repetition of what's already been said. Basically, 10.1F. You stated at the beginning of the meeting that councillors can't be promoting themselves because it's close to an election, and currently that's all I've been hearing in a lot of your speeches.
So councillor Dimitriadis, I'm not accepting your point of order, because you said that the point of order was about 10.1F constitutes a tedious repetition of something already said, nothing about what you said...
That's right, you're repeatedly advocating for yourself.
Which part is a tedious repetition, councillor Dimitriadis?
I'm sorry, just your, the, what your speeches have been like over the last few items, it's just been a tedious repetition.
Which part was tedious? Which part was repetitive?
The fact that you're actually advocate promoting a position, and into the future, which is, we were told we couldn't do that, so we couldn't promote ourselves for the election. I'm not sure how much information I can...
Yes, sorry councillor Dimitriadis. So the question was, is what I'm saying a tedious repetition of something already said? And nothing about your debate indicated what was repetitive or tedious?
I'm happy to also do a valid, a point of order for D, which is constitutes improper behaviour before an election.
Councillor Dimitriadis, did you want to point out what was improper?
Oh, sure, thank you, Mayor. I've mentioned previously that your speeches have been, you've been advocating in your speeches, when we were clearly, all councillors were told that we could not do that, whereas you seem to be talking about a future council, you seem to be advocating on the positions that you're taking, when we were specifically told we had to stick to the agenda, and I hear that you're going overboard.
Thank you councillor Dimitriadis. So I will rule on that point of order. So 10.1F, does it constitute a tedious repetition of something already said? There was no evidence of anything that I said that was repetitive, so I will not accept that point of order. 10.1D constitutes improper behaviour, I will not accept that point of order. I'm speaking about the Plan for Victoria and Housing Targets Submission, I'm speaking about social housing in Preston, and there is nothing in my mind that is not relevant to the Plan for Victoria and Housing Targets Submission. Thank you councillor Dimitriadis. So I'll continue with my debate, and what I was saying is that I'm very proud of the social housing that Housing Choices was able to build in Preston over a council car park, but I'm very disappointed that unfortunately that wasn't able to happen in Chadstone recently, because they weren't able to get state and federal funding. So for me, I'm very keen on the future council doing more of those projects over council land, and I'll leave it there, thank you. Do we have, so that's it? And we'll go to the vote on the Plan for Victoria and Housing Targets Submission, all those in favour? That's carried unanimously, thank you councillors. And we'll now go to 9.6, the Declaration of a Special Charge, Solar Saver Round 4.2, Batch 5. Do we have any questions of the officers regarding this item? No questions? Okay, do we have a, we'll go to the debate, and I remind you, once we enter the debate, there'll be no further questions. Do we have a mover of the motion? Councillor McCarthy, seconded by councillor Eni. Councillor McCarthy, please go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll keep this brief. Thanks to the officers that have brought this to us this evening. Very pleased that, and I'll just highlight that the, as we know, this Solar Saver Programme, which has, I think, been one of the hallmarks of this council over, well and truly over a decade, has continued to evolve, but has also continued to deliver. And I think one of the things that's important here is that even in this case, we have 15 installations that are being supported tonight through this batch. We talk about it as a batch, because the way we have to build this programme is by bringing together interest and assessment that's been undertaken by our officers, and also through our delivery partners, to make sure that what we are putting forward actually is efficient, appropriate, and of course, can be supported both through the legislation and our own special charge scheme, but also is going to meet the needs of the individual operator, owner, or in this case, household as well. Mayor, I'll just commend the, I suppose, the fact that we continue to do this. It is not something that council has to do, but it is something council wants to do. And as councillors would be aware with this, the climate emergency plan that we recently adopted, there will be change potentially to the Solar Saver Scheme and what it focuses on, so it's a real pleasure to support this one here tonight. And congratulations to those that are involved, and the contribution they're making to driving emissions down in the city of Darabin.
Thank you councillor McCarthy, and I'll go to the seconded councillor, Eni.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinarily, I think probably I wouldn't speak to this, but I note that this is not only the last batch that will come through before a 5% processing fee applies, but probably, almost certainly, the last batch of Solar Savers approvals that will come through in this term of council. And I think for that reason, it's something that's really worth celebrating, and I think we should celebrate council's commitment to this project, we should celebrate the enthusiasm with which it's been embraced by our community members, and every single one of the hundreds, and probably thousands of community members who has solar panels on their roofs as a result of this programme, who's taken that step, and we should celebrate certainly the work of our staff over many years, making this programme happen, and actually making this programme a model for something that was followed across the country, and you know, the fact that it's been embraced as a model by other levels of government. So thank you to all of those parties, and particularly our staff.
Thank you councillor Eni. Do we have further speakers? No? Okay, we'll go to the vote on Solar Savers, all those in favour? It's carried unanimously, thank you councillors. And we'll go to 9.7, the Electric Vehicle Charging Implementation. Can I check, is Jo and Wood in the audience? No? That's fine. So councillors, do we have any questions of the officers regarding, oh, sorry, and Vanessa, I'll just wait for you to leave. Councillors, do we have any questions of the officers regarding this item? No questions? Okay, do we have a mover? Councillor Eni, and do we...
Mayor, I'd like to move with a very small amendment, which would be to add the words "fast food" before the word "tobacco" into the advertising.
Thank you councillor Eni. Can we get that on screen, please? Governess?
I just want to have, I've got a question.
No worries. What I'll do is I'll just, I'll just go through, and I'll go to you in a minute councillor Masina. Councillor Eni, can I check, is that your intention? So we've got the two providers, and we've got the word "fast food" added?
It should just be prohibit the advertising of fast food, so just need to move the "of". So just need to move the of behind to before.
Yes.
Fast food, fast food, comma, tobacco. Thank you. That was circulated earlier, I think.
Thank you.
Not a lot earlier, but it should be in councillors' inboxes.
Thank you. And do we have a secondor? Council McCarthy and Council Missina, got your question?
Rennie, my question is, what constitutes fast food? Can we just have some clarity? Is it not our local restaurants? Is it more like McDonald's, KFC, Burger King?
That's a good question. Thank you, Council Missina. I'll go to Alan and Kevin for that response.
Provide some clarity. I just want to make sure, ensure that if we've got a local, a local business that wants to use this to advertise their local business and they happen to be a restaurant, that that's not going to prohibit them from partaking.
Thank you. I'll go to Alan and when you're ready.
Thank you for the question, councillor Missina. Through you, Mayor. For us to work with the provider to be very clear with them on which fast food outlets or retailers could or could not participate with council, we'd need some more guidance.
Thank you.
I have a supplementary question before, yeah. Because can we have perhaps, maybe councillor Rennie might consider perhaps strengthening that perhaps? I'm just trying to ascertain your intention and I'm assuming your intention is those big outlets. So perhaps we can strengthen that word. I'm just assuming.
Thank you, Mayor. To clarify, I think if one were to look up fast food on Wikipedia, the sort of definition would be quite adequate. It relates to food that is usually mass-produced from pre-prepared or frozen ingredients, usually in a place with a drive-through. These are the type of things. So I have confidence in our staff to develop a workable thing that will certainly exclude the type of restaurants that councillor Missina is talking about.
Thank you. I'm satisfied with that, councillor Missina. So I think, you know, I think we'd be talking about the McDonald's and the KFCs, not the restaurants across the road. Council Lawrence?
Oh, yep.
Well, Rachel, did you want to add anything before I go to councillor Lawrence?
So I think based on the response I heard from Alan, there is, I think that is a tricky thing to define. What I can say is that if councillors proceed with it in this form, we might take it away, but we might need to seek clarification at a later date.
Thank you. That's fine with me.
Could we add the word chain, fast food? Would that help?
Thank you. Governess, could we get the word chain ahead of the word fast, please? And councillor Lawrence, did you have a question?
Through you, Mayor, I was just going to suggest an amendment of chain to go after the words fast food, fast food chains.
Fast food chain? Yes. Look, I think, I think that's good. And I think, I think that does sort of limit the scope a little bit in a way that I think is hopefully useful to officers.
I would certainly say it assists, but again, I'd just caution that it's a bit tricky. And if we find out it's trickier than we realise right now, we'll, we'll just test and clarify back through the chamber at the right time.
Thank you, Rachel. That's very useful. And I'll go, I've got to move in a secondor, so I'll go to councillor Rennie.
Thank you, Mayor. This is actually a really exciting development for our council. There is significant community demand for more EV charging stations. Many people don't have capacity to charge off-street. And other people, you know, in their day-to-day affairs around Darabin would like to be able to charge vehicles. These vehicles are the way of the future. There is no doubt that 30, 40, 50 years from now, people will be driving EVs and this type of infrastructure will be required more than the fossil fuel type petrol stations that we see today. It's therefore really necessary that we think about how we roll out this infrastructure. And one thing that I think we've all learned on council is that infrastructure costs a lot of money. And we need to be creative and think about how we can achieve really good outcomes for our community. Both for those people driving EVs, but also for people who are not using the infrastructure at the moment so that they don't experience amenity impacts. I think that in relation to the idea of advertising, it is something I've looked at a little bit because really it means that our community and visual amenity is contributing towards paying for this type of charging infrastructure. But I think what we've found here is a reasonable compromise, which would be that a company installing EV charging outlets could use those to advertise some products, but it would certainly not be acceptable for them to be used to advertise fast food, tobacco, gambling, alcohol and fossil fuels. But more importantly, enabling this, we'll see a rapid increase in the number of chargers available in our community, well beyond what our council would be able to fund and deliver. And I think that's really important. It is a sort of partnership and let's face it, it's actually not out of keeping with what happens at the moment with petrol stations being visible throughout the municipality. The difference here is that this will occur on council land. But then parking also occurs on council land and driving occurs on council land. So we have already decided as a community that it's an appropriate use of council land to drive, to park, and therefore I would say to charge. And I think that's a really positive thing that now this will encourage many, many more people, I'm sure, to think about getting an EV. And that is good for the environment. It's also good for local air quality.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. And I'll go to the secondor, who I've forgotten, councillor McCarthy.
Mayor, look, I won't speak very long. You've been doing your own advocacy, I know, on this issue. So I'll, I'll cede the floor to you because of obviously the context that we find ourselves in, where we have not been one of the pilot sites, but we now become one of the potentially continuing sites. And I think it's important to understand where the shift has happened recently because of the City of Melbourne's decision. It puts a particular focus on what is the east-west routes, which I think are really interesting to consider. We do know that those are the routes that currently are largely dependent upon bus. Bus transport is the major form of public transport. But there is not, I suppose, a visible or easy accessible option for people that, you know, are looking for other routes that don't, that aren't supported this way and don't want to be in a car or can't get on a bike. So what I think the EV, the electric vehicle charging scheme really does is that it supports us in a whole lot of ways. It supports us with electric vehicles. It also supports us with mobility and it supports us also across the board. Mayor, I'll end it there, but I'd also support councillor Rennie's focus on removing the advertising for fast food chains as well. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Have we got any further speakers, councillor Greco?
Thank you, Mayor Newton. Look, I think that this motion is important, that we move in the direction of installing electric vehicle chargers. It's something that really needs to be done if we are to welcome electric vehicles. And because that's a necessary part of the infrastructure in regards to electric vehicle. Just as it's interesting in looking at this motion, I did some research, just, it's really interesting. In China, 62% of new cars that are produced in China are electric cars. And nearly 20 or 30% of the existing cars in China are electric cars. And their infrastructure, in terms of their charging infrastructure, reflects that. So the two things obviously go in hand in hand. And we really have to accelerate the process of electric vehicle charging infrastructure in order to allow and give more confidence to people to buy and use and be very confident with using EVs.
Thank you, councillor Greco. Have we got any further speakers to this item? No, I'll just wrap up by saying I'm very supportive of the proposal. I think this is one where in some ways our community is ahead of us. So I was at Northland recently and I saw three electric vehicles in a row, even though as far as I know, Northland has no charges. So there's a lot of work to do in this space. We really want to get up there. I remember having conversations when we were talking about what we needed for the North Aquatic and Recreation Centre, about whether we should do 10 charges. Obviously, the answer was yes. I'm pretty sure they're full all the time. So very supportive of this. As councillor McCarthy and councillor Rennie pointed out, it's great for air quality if you're not, if you don't have petrol cars. We are doing also wider advocacy in this space around our e-scooter trial that's coming up. Something that's really important to me as well as an e-bike rider is that North Aquatic and Recreation Centre also has charging for e-bikes as well. So I think let's not forget that part of the picture, e-scooters and e-bikes. But very happy to see this progressing and looking forward to seeing this rolled out across the municipality. Absolutely support the amendment from councillor Rennie about fast food chains. We don't need that sort of advertising in our municipality. And I'm very supportive of the other prohibited items that we won't see advertising tobacco, gambling, alcohol and fossil fuels. That's the right way forward. So thank you, councillors. We'll end it there and we will go to the vote. All those in favour of this motion? That's carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. We'll go to 9.8, the year one performance of the Wat Jaring Animal Facility. Do we have questions about this one? Not seeing any hands, so we'll go straight to the debate. Councillor Williams, would you like to move the officer's recommendation? And do we have a secondor, councillor Greco? Councillor Williams, I'll go over to you for the debate.
Thank you. In 2022, Darabin council made a pivotal decision to enter into a five-year joint contract to manage animal welfare services at the Epping facility under a new house model. This past year has been a very remarkable achievement, including successful rebranding and renaming the facility Wat Jerry. This joint commitment alongside Whittlesey and Marybeck councils marked a new chapter for Wat Jerry with a budget of up to 2.2 million. Our aim was to create a facility that truly embodied the spirit of collaboration, care and our community. Over the past year, I'm very proud to say that Wat Jerry has lived up to these aspirations, making significant drives in animal welfare. Our facility, which was named Wat Jerry, meaning we together, reflects our commitment to our partner councils, various not-for-profit and community groups. This partnership model in alignment with domestic animal management plan has enabled us to care for over 4,200 animals in just this past year, providing shelter, veterinary care and facilitating adoptions. 751 animals finding loving homes through our adoption services, significantly reducing euthanasian rates down to 12.8% for cats and 8% for dogs compared to previous years. These successes as a huge accomplishments have not come without challenges. Operating at near capacity, the facility has faced higher than anticipated costs from direct adoption services, increased animal surrenders and in-house veterinarian care. All have contributed to this financial strain. Working with our partner councils to explore future services options will be something that we will look at for, as, from both for sustainability and also to continue excellence in our animal welfare. To everyone involved in this journey, from our partner councils to the dedicated staff and volunteers who have made this work possible to continue support and commitment to this vital community service does not go unnoticed. I want to express my deepest gratitude for my vision from over 10 years ago coming to fruition of a dedicated facility with a solid foundation ensuring that every animal that comes through Wat Jerry doors has the best chance at a better life. Wat Jerry, meaning we together, is more than just a shelter. It truly embodies the spirit of collaboration, a symbol of our community's compassion, dedication to make a difference in the lives of animals. It is a beacon of hope and compassion for animals in need. So thank you to all involved and together we make a difference, one animal at a time.
Thank you, councillor Williams. And I want to commend your advocacy in this space over more than a decade. So thank you very much. I'll go to the secondor, councillor Greco.
May I just reserve my right to speak?
Okay. Do we have any further speakers? Councillor Greco, would you like to speak? You have nothing further? Okay, thank you. So we'll put that item to the vote. All those in favour? That's carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. We'll go on to 9.9, the 2324 Quarter Four Performance Report, non-financial. We'll just bring Vanessa, the general manager, back in and we'll restart then. Thank you, Missina. Welcome back. So have we got any questions of officers on the Quarter Four Performance Report, councillor Missina?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. I'm just curious, what happens to the items that are not completed during this council term? And what happens with a new council? And will some of those areas be not completed because of a different direction?
Thank you. I'll go to officers for that response.
Thank you for the question. Through you, Mayor. The range of actions that weren't completed in the 2324 year are carried over into the 2425 year, so the last year. We also had a range of actions that were completed in July. So all of the actions that weren't completed are targeted for 2425 unless they were put down as deferred.
Thank you, Lisa. Councillor Missina, did you have any further questions?
So if they're deferred, it means that they're not going to be completed at all?
Lisa, did you want to clarify the response?
Yep. Through you, Mayor. If you've got a specific action, we can refer to the update on that. But most of the actions that were not complete and deferred will be done, completed in 2425.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just checking about the community safety framework. So I'm just going to go. I wasn't aware of that. I thought it was going to be deferred to the next period. So-
Councillor Missina, while you're looking for that, Kylie, did you want to add to?
Through you, Mayor. I can talk to the community safety example. So yes, absolutely, that would be an action that would continue on with the, with the new council. So we're partway through that piece of work. And we would continue that work unless the new council made a decision otherwise. But that, that's certainly our intent, is to continue on with that work.
Thank you, Kylie. That's everything. I'll go to councillor Greco. Can you ask your questions, please?
Thank you, Mayor Newton. Just following on from the question asked by councillor Missina. If in 2324, if 63.8% of the actions were completed, from what I've heard, the remaining will be completed in the following financial year or this current financial year. What impact would that have on the, on the actions of the current financial year? And will there be capacity in council to both catch up with that work that was not completed previously and also completing the current financial work?
Thank you. I'll go to Lisa.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. The actions, well, most of them were multi-year actions. So the work had already been identified to be carried over. And part of the work was being completed in 2324 and 2425. So the officers across the actions are comfortable, they can be complete. We will be coming back quarterly on the actions to give that progress. And we'll highlight through those quarterly updates if there's any variance from that. And if there's any specific actions, we can come back specifically on that.
Thank you. Rachel, would you like to add to that?
Look, councillors, I think there is a risk in the year ahead. And we'll watch it really closely as an executive team. But anytime you carry work over from a year into a new year, there is a risk. Some of the things that will sort of affect whether that risk comes to fruition are whether there are unexpected things that we need to prioritise ahead of some of those things that are already on the list. And also we are still carrying sort of higher than typical vacancy rates. So those are probably the two big variables. Depending on how they play out through the quarter, we'll have a better, a harder or easier time of delivering that whole program.
Thank you, councillor Greco. Did you have further questions? No. Okay, any further questions? No. Okay. No. Okay. Do we have a, we will close questions. We'll commence the debate. Do we have a mover of this item? Councillor Hannan, do we have a second? Councillor McCarthy. Councillor Hannan, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. So as we've just heard, this report that we're considering tonight is an overview of the action plan up until, it's up until the end of June of, so that's the last financial year, 202324, as part of our overall four-year council plan, which has one year left to run. And as we've heard, there's a number of actions that weren't completed. There was 63.8% of actions completed, which is a little less than forecast. And we have heard, as we've just heard, some of those, some key actions were completed just after June, you know, the including highlights of the welcoming cities accreditation, climate emergency plan and others carried to the next year's action plan. And we note Rachel, acting CEO's advice on the risks there and that will need to be managed closely. But also note that there were 38 actions from council resolutions during this period, which inevitably take up resources from other planned items. It's encouraging to see that capital works largely on track during a very challenging time for building works. Just a couple of highlights to note. There was a new grant stream created after consultation with original organisations and the Darabhan Original Advisory Committee. And that's underway, that's in place now. There's a total of over 11,000 participants registered in sporting clubs during the last financial year, which is an increase of over 5% from the previous year. And procurement from local businesses continues to rise and is up to almost 15%, which is very positive. This, the report itself is a large amount of work. This is the non-financial side of things. We look forward to receiving the financial report, I believe, in the next meeting. And I'd just like to thank all the staff for putting this together and the whole organisation for all the work that it represents. So thank you.
Well said. Thank you, councillor Hannan. And we'll go to councillor McCarthy as the second.
Thanks, mayor. Councillor Hannan's given a great overview of the overall position. I'm going to be a little bit indulgent and jump to a couple of the key things that are highlighted in the report, mayor, which I think is worth noting because we do have effort that can be lost. And this is an overall report on activity, but there are some really important activities that sit within. So I just wanted to pick up, and it's timely, given councillor Rennie's comments before. In this, in this quarter, 99 solar systems were installed using our special charge scheme. A further 89 solar systems were installed through council's bulk by contract. This has, this has made a tangible difference, just those numbers alone, to the livability, the functionality and the emissions of those properties. Mayor, we've also seen a range of activities happening in relation to our natural environment. Some really good outcomes in relation to the work of the Edwards Lake and Edgar's Creek Task Force. We've also seen some really important work in relation to how we are understanding risk in relation to our drainage network. That is a planned activity, but it's an important activity as we start to grapple with the reality of climate impacts and ageing infrastructure that a city which has an enormous amount of social and public good to deliver, also has infrastructure requirements that it has to maintain. And we've touched on that already. Mayor, I'd also just want to highlight the fact that this is the the last report that we will consider in this council term, but it also sets up the next council term. And one of the items here is the work that our officers do to support the preparation for the council elections. And I'd highlight the fact that that is really important for us to recognise in this chamber that we don't have anything to do with that process ourselves here, but it sets us up for the future. So some really important investment and work that's happened there. And last but not least, mayor, I just wanted to highlight the fact that behind every one of these completed actions is a whole lot of councillor officer time. So I'd like to end by thanking the officers despite all sorts of challenges that the organisation faces. At any time of the year, they continue to do great work and I want to thank them for that.
Here, here. Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Have we got any further speakers? Not seeing any, so we'll go straight to the vote. All of those in favour of the report? Thank you. That's carried unanimously. We'll now go to 9.10. This is the Adoption of Provision of Proactive Tree Management Services. And we'll just seek any questions of officers on this item. Councillor Messina?
I'd like to ask the same questions I asked on the briefing in relation to the KPIs and the service delivery, please. The measurables.
The measurables on the tree management service? Thank you. Michael, are we going to you for this? So it's a question from councillor Messina about what KPIs or measures we have in place about the tree management services.
Thank you. Through you, mayor. I think the most important thing to note is that we've put in a 5% audit percentage. So if we identify that the providers not met their obligations within a 5% threshold, they are required to go back and complete those works at their cost, not in addition to ours. In addition to that, that covers, I guess, all aspects of the contract, whether that be the the power line, the electrical line clearances and as far as the data collection that will continue to help identify further aspects of our coverage across the municipality.
Thank you. Did you have any further questions, councillor Messina?
But I'm trying to ascertain, and I know the answer, but I want this, I want the chamber to know that. Just in relation to addressing service delivery and just ensuring that, I know this is a lot of advocacy and a lot of discussion by this council to ensuring that if we put an item out to tender, that there's going to be service deliverables that we can measure to ensure that the contractor meets their obligations based on our standards and that actually gives us a better return on the investment.
I think you sort of answered that with the last answer, but was there anything you wanted to add further?
I think the only other thing I can add through you, mayor, is the the way that the tender's been structured is to service the municipality across various sections of areas that run on that two-year cycle, which allows for us to ensure that we're meeting the obligations of legislative requirements for the electrical line clearances, but also ensures that we're doing this in a proactive manner so that we reduce the overall ad hoc net need that can come with, you know, tree pruning as a whole. So therefore the idea is that ultimately we're creating a much more better value for the money being spent by taking the proactive approach instead of a pure reactive.
Thanks, Michael. I'll also go to Rachel. Did you want to add something?
Look, I think the thing I'd add is that for a tender and a contract of this scale, council has a robust sort of standard suite of contract terms and conditions which are designed to make sure that we've got performance management in place, indicators for any contract, appropriate contract oversight and dispute resolution clauses. So we have quite a number of contracts of this scale and there's specialist advice both internally and externally that we use to put together any contract of this scale and to make sure that we've got those belt and braces in place.
Thank you. Does that cover it, councillor Messina? Thank you. Do we have further questions? Michael, it's probably worth just touching on the cost. Could you explain a little bit to us about that it's higher than expected?
Yeah, absolutely. So we definitely have highlighted in the report that the tenders come back at a much higher cost than what's been budgeted. We did identify that we anticipated a significant increase due to the timing of the tender taking place from when the last one was ran and established. We've also done quite a bit of due diligence, as you have seen in the appendix, that we've compared this to other municipalities and have identified that, you know, we're falling within an appropriate range for this large amount of work. We have identified that there is going to need to be a process to continue to identify savings to support the ongoing cost in which we will come back to council to continue to, you know, highlight the ways that we are trying to target those those things through various savings throughout the course of the year and potential opportunities to make adjustments within the budget itself.
Thank you. That's very useful. So we'll close questions there and we'll go to the debate. Do we have a mover of this? Councillor McCarthy? Do we have a second? Councillor Hannan? Councillor McCarthy, I'll go to you.
Thanks, mayor. I'm moving this reluctantly and I move this reluctantly not for any comment for the process at all, but because I hate this contract and I hate it because of what it asks us to do. It's so frustrating. And I say this with absolute recognition that we have advocated for for changes to how we manage our street tree assets for a long time in this chamber. The cost of this contract has gone up. Congratulations to the successful tenderer. If I can ask if that can be included, please, on there. And I'm sure that they'll do a great job. And I applaud our officers for the work that has been undertaken through diligent diligence. But I want to point out something and there is important commentary in this report on page 455, councillors, which is that not only has the cost of this contract and this service gone up, we know the reasons why, we've had that commentary. But we are also required to prune a whole range of our street trees well beyond what we used to do, all because of what I personally consider, and I also know our own local government, Pinkbody, also believes is the case for an excessively onerous model of street tree pruning that is born out of the post-Black Saturday fires where urban street trees are treated in the same way that rural and regional street trees are treated. As a result, that increases the cost to council. It increases the loss of tree canopy on an annual basis. It has a massive impact on our biodiversity. And just to put this into context, the 75,000 trees that Darabhan is home to in the public sphere, that's not the privacy, but that's the public sphere, of the 75,000, 65,000 of them are street trees. 27,000 of them actually are ones under power lines. That's 42% of our total street tree canopy sits under power lines. And those are the ones that have been pruned well beyond what they used to. And if you see that huge decimation of canopy, it's about a metre from a branch. That is why we have that impact on amenity. So we have advocated continuously. This contract is actually where the community gets to see the real cost, not just the cost out there, but the actual financial cost of what is a regulation that can be changed. And should that regulation be changed, then that cost will go down. So I make that point, mayor, because it's probably the last time I'll ever get to talk about this publicly and I'm taking the advantage of it, to say if council really wants to see this cost go down, then I would ask it to continue to advocate along with the MAV, along with experts in the field to say this is a poorly written regulation. It can be rewritten. It is absolutely within the power of government to do so. I encourage those members of parliament that have seen this already as an issue and support their efforts to see amendments to this legislation and sorry, these regulations. But really to say that, you know, the community feels this in three fronts. The cost of this contract is the result of onerous regulations. The cost is also a result of the natural increase across the board and the market position. That's fine. The second thing is the amenity impact. But thirdly, mayor, it is actually the impact on a long term to our environmental assets. And I just hope that next time this matter comes back to council, that there's been a change to the regulations and therefore a reduction in that overall cost. But congratulations to the successful tenderer, thanks to our officers and the due diligence that they do with this work.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy, for moving a motion with something that you hate involved. And we do hope councillor Rennie, that you will continue our advocacy in conjunction with Malv on this issue. And I'll go to councillor Hannan as the second.
Thank you, mayor. I concur with councillor McCarthy. This is also not a loved contract for me. Many people may not know this about me, but I'm actually a bit of a secret tree hugger. I love trees.
Is it a secret, councillor Hannan?
And, and this contract is all about cutting down trees or pruning trees, I should say. But look, seriously, as councillor McCarthy mentioned, council has serious, significant legal obligations and risks to manage here in terms of the power lines, but also just general public safety and liability in terms of, you know, trips over branches or roots, fallen branches or roots. This is a really important contract and we've heard from the staff about the reasons that the price has run over. It's, it's, it's not a surprise, to be honest. If you look around every council in Victoria, for the reasons that councillor McCarthy has mentioned, there is ongoing work, you know, on streets. It is, it's a very competitive market and there is a need for specialised and experienced contractors. It's not something that we want to do on the cheap. I have gone through the procurement report. There's a very detailed evaluation matrix and independent probity report. These, the staff have gone through this very closely to see if there's any savings possible. They've also looked at other options, you know, could we put this off? Could we defer it? Unfortunately, it's not the sort of work that we can defer. So it's just a cost we're going to have to find. I understand there have been some look, looking at where savings can be found. And this will come back to us, come back to council as part of the quarter one financial review in the next financial year. So I'll leave that there and I'll commend the staff for their work. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hannan. Have we got any further speakers? No. Okay. We will go to the vote on the provision of tree management services. All those in favour? That's carried unanimously. Thank you councillors. So we have no items to be tabled. We have no notices of motion. Is there any urgent business? Councillor Dimitri Artis?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I circulated a motion about having all councillors on the CEO Employment Matters Committee as observers. I note that last time what was passed was to be members of the committee. That didn't pass. This is about being observers on the committee, particularly when it's about hiring an independent, no, sorry, an interim CEO.
Councillor Dimitri Artis, you've received advice by email that your urgent motion is not able to be tabled. Please resume your seat.
Oh, sorry, mayor. The advice was talking about the previous motion, which was about being members of the committee, which obviously didn't pass. But then this is about being observers of the committee. So it's completely different to what was referred to previously.
Thank you, councillor Dimitri Artis. Let me check the rules. Thank you. So the ruling that you received by email earlier today stands as it is similar in intent. Thank you, councillor Dimitri Artis. So we'll now go on to item.
Mayor, if I may, just ask a question of clarification?
Yes.
I saw the email about councillor Dimitri Artis's motion saying that it's not a valid, something about not being a valid motion. But also the advice went on and said that that if the majority of councillors considered the motion to be debated, if all councillors are present, then it can be debated. Can we just get some clarification on that advice?
I can seek clarification, but the advice that was sent by email is that the urgent item cannot be tabled. But I will seek governance advice to double check for you. Thank you, councillor Greco. So basically the item is not considered urgent, so it cannot be tabled. Let me just see. Good advice, councillor Greco. Let me just see. Could vice councillor Greco? Sorry, councillor Greco, we're just getting the right rule. Thank you, councillor Greco. So the advice is that because it's not acceptable as urgent business, it can't be voted on.
Sorry, Mayor. I just wanted to say, I believe that it is urgent business because it's about hiring the interim CEO, which we've never been in this position before without all councillors.
Thank you, councillor Dimitriades. So I'll repeat that the advice that was circulated to you by email earlier this afternoon remains the same. So we'll go on to...
And Newton, if I may, just as a point of clarification, I just found the section that deals with urgent motions. It's 8.13, which says, "A motion to admit an item of urgent business can only be approved by council if the proposed motion of urgent business that it goes through." So it's only council that, my reading of that, and that's been the previous reading, that it's council to make that consideration in relation to an urgent motion, as it's different to a notice of motion, which is the CEO who has the veto, if you like, on a notice of motion. But an urgent motion, it's council to make that decision. I'm just seeking a point of clarification because that's how these matters have been dealt with in the past.
Thank you, councillor Greco. Councillor Rennie, did you want to add something?
Mayor, I just seek a point of clarification. My understanding is the motion hasn't been accepted because it's similar intent to a previous motion, not because of the question of whether it's urgent or not. We're debating the urgent business, as though it's urgent business, when actually, if I understand correctly, if you could clarify, the reason it's not acceptable is because we, a similar motion with similar intent was put up at the last meeting.
So basically, it doesn't pass that hurdle. So because it doesn't pass the hurdle of being urgent and a similar intent, a motion with a similar intent has been put forward within six months, we can't progress it. It doesn't, it stops at that gate. So councillors, we'll go on to item 13. Consideration reports considered confidential, we have none. And item 14 is closer meeting. As there is no other business to consider this evening, I'd like to declare the council meeting closed at 8.57pm. I wasn't expecting to finish before nine, so well done, councillors, and thank you. I see our monitors smiling over there. So thank you, monitors, as well. And we will close the meeting at 8.57. Thank you and good night. Councillors, officers, members of the public in attendance, now viewers.